We welcome all of you here. I'll start hurting the cat a little bit. Thank you for attending.
Sorry, I just left last night.
I don't saw a water conservation meeting.
I forgot Kathy wasn't coming.
And with that, we'll go around in the room and have an introduction and go from there. Norman Wright, Chair.
Eric Olson, Secretary.
Wendy Pratt with the Commission.
Dylan Truss with the Commission.
Crystal Rosen with the Commission.
Joan Phelan with IASC.
Steve Becker, IASC.
Okay, who's joining us on the phone or the Zoom?
Benjamin Kelly with AAD.
Thanks Benjamin.
Brenda Rummer.
Kathy Rummer with the Commission.
Thank you Kathy.
Amy Miller with NRCS Idaho.
Thank you.
George Hitz with the Commission.
Shane Bell with the Attorney General's Office.
Devin Fielding, IASC.
Thanks Devin. Right Bob?
And Bob Flagger, Division One.
Jeanette Mendenhall from Lewis Soil Conservation District.
Welcome. Anyone else like to introduce themselves or has it? Okay, do we have anybody on the phone? Well, that will continue on. We'll call the Commissioners.
Chairman Norman Wright.
Here.
Commissioner Kathy Romer.
Here.
Commissioner Eric Olson.
Here.
Commissioner Wendy Pratt.
Here.
Good. With that, we're moving to partner reports, but due to some time constraints and want the listener to, I guess, we need to talk to Benjamin Kelly, please.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chairman, and great to join you and want to say congratulations also to Commissioner Pratt and her operation for receiving a Governor's Award yesterday. And it was good to see Commissioners there as well and Chairman Wright and Eric Olson as well. And I think a good week. So anyways, yeah, House Bill 642, sorry, I'm having problems with the internet here, but anyways, you've seen that the bill has been printed and what we did was, as the Association was sent along the information. And there's, sorry, we sent along the information from our annual meeting to Carolyn Troy. And from there, you know, she came up with the language. So, you know, she had taken the language from the the Wheat Commission's language or what was put in statute on the Wheat Commission. Now, they only have five districts. We're talking about seven, or sorry, five divisions. We're talking about seven divisions. Once again, you know, I think something we made clear was that no one has any appetite to or does not want to remove current sitting Commissioners, anything like that. And so, a pretty, there's a lot to the bill and there's a lot of information that needs to be conveyed if it's going to go forward. So what I've, from what I've heard, there will likely be a Ad Committee hearing next week on it. And so that's kind of where we stand with it, but I'm happy to answer any questions or Steve Becker's in the room, Joan Jones in the room, Devin's on the phone. But anyways, that's kind of where we're at with it and go from there.
Do we have questions for Mr. Kelly? Benjamin, I'll ask you a question because in your opening remarks, that triggered a question in my mind. You made comment that no sitting Commissioner would be in jeopardy or whatever. And in the bill, it talks about as of like it took effect July 1, there'd be a reset. And it talks about, you know, all the divisions and terms and this and all that. Also, Bill talks about specifically about the Commissioner would have to be representing from that division. That immediately says we'll have a problem as of July 1 if this passes as such, since one and are technically the same division. How would you respond to that and why the bill's written?
Yeah, so Mr. Chairman, it was my understanding that you're coming up on the end of your second term. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, so as of July 1, that wouldn't be a conflict. But that being said, yes, so all sitting Commissioners as of July 1.
Reset. You know, according to this bill, it says there's a reset and it specifically says I would be extended for three years. And it has that written in there.
But it also says, I think, you read it there, I think it says that you're limited to two consecutive terms. So I don't know how, that's a language cleanup that we're talking about.
That's what I think.
Yeah, because it definitely tops him over on his.
But I know I did read that it does say you're limited to two consecutive terms.
That is correct. So once the bill would take effect July 1, 2022, that would be the same time that the Chairman would have been done with his second term. So there will be no crossover on that.
It, to me, on page four, sentence 15 says Commissioners serving on July 1 will be assigned to divisions that they represent. The current Commission, the Will of Government Reappointment Position, that goes on, talks about the reset. So I'm just asking that question.
I'm going to say that as of July 1, you wouldn't be serving.
That is correct. July 1 is.
Your term would be over the end of the fiscal year, which ends in June.
Until there is another person, generally, the rule is that until there is another person appointed for that position, you continue as is happening right now. So that leaves an ambiguity in there.
It, there's. There's ambiguity in every state statute that we ever. True.
I know that there's more here than.
Does this legislation, if it passes through the legislature and is signed by the Governor, will that, will this revised amended Conservation District law going to affect July 1? So June 30, this new legislation will not be in effect. Which means that until July 1, when this new legislation does go into effect, there is no such thing as a term limit, a two-term limit for Commissioners. In existing statute, there is no two-term limit. And so that is a little bit of a stickler, isn't it?
Mr. Chairman, no, because it switches on July 1. And so, yes, there isn't a term limit or if there is, I thought there was a term limit for two terms, but even if there currently isn't, as of July 1, there would be. So unless the Governor decided and the Chairman wanted to run for a third term or put his name in there, that would make it possibly a problem. But as we stand now, as of what the Chairman has decided is he was going to do two terms and fulfill those two terms and then be done, so.
So would that make Wendy go from six to five then? Is that how that's going to work?
Not necessarily. Because there is, it says representation of the division. It doesn't say you have, you don't have to live in that division.
Yeah, it does.
No, it doesn't say that you have to live in the division.
I thought I read that.
I think I read it.
No, it depends on how you read it.
You even made the lawyer laugh.
It does say one from Division 1, one from Division 2.
Says live somewhere.
One from, it doesn't say four.
There it is. It's on.
In which they live.
Paragraph section, page four, read sentence number, I think it's 17 and 18. Will the reappointed positions represent the divisions which they live?
Yeah. That's a little language stuff that we're talking about. So technically, she would go to five and there'd be an open seat in six.
And Mr. Chairman, currently, we do not have anybody representing specific divisions. Just in Eric Olson's case, his predecessor was actually from Division 2, but right now, there's no representation specifically for Division 2. And you may remember, I think it was Bob or a couple of people up north had said, yeah, we want to make sure and have Division 1 and 2 represented. And so that's where, that's where the seven member came into existence in the first place was to ensure all six divisions are represented. So that being said, yes, as of July, Commissioner Pratt would be Division 5. And obviously, you know, it's kind of, you know, it was unsettled that it was Commissioner Pratt representing Division 6 in the first place because of where she lives. And, and it's not, it was no bone of, it's not a bone of contention or anything like that, but that is where she lives out of Blackfoot. And so she would represent Division 5, Romer, Commissioner Romer would be Division 4 currently, and then Commissioner Olson would be Division 1. And then we would have to start the process of finding those other positions for those corresponding divisions.
My sticking point, hang up, is the seventh one. Exactly, I mean, I know it's supposed to be at the Governor's, what's the term in here?
Discretion.
Discretion, or, but what is exactly their role? Who do they represent? I mean, they're not representing the Governor at this table. They're supposed to be representing the districts, but are they, that's the part I can't get past. I know you need to have seven because you want to have a tiebreaker vote. The Wheat Commission, if I'm not mistaken, has, is there five? Or is there six? But see, they don't let the Chairman has.
They don't let the Chairman, right.
Can't vote. So there's always six. That's how they did that. So that's my hang up is what exactly is the seventh Commissioner? Who do they represent? That's my, my big thing. And it doesn't, it's not clear in the language to me.
Mr. Chairman and Eric, yeah, it is not specifically only to break the tie, but just like Commissioner Trebesch, former Commissioner Trebesch, had that banking background, those kind of things. So it's basically at the discretion of the Governor, yes, correct. And it could be somebody from his, well, it couldn't be somebody from his staff, but somebody, anyone he chose to represent, to fill that seat. And, you know, we wanted to leave that open for the Governor to make sure that there's comfortability with, with any expertise that might be needed on the Commission, that, that there would be a role for that. And we specifically were thinking about the, you know, the, the financial side, like it's been practiced in the past.
Yeah, I get, I get what you're saying. I just, the part that I understand, the way that I look at it, and maybe I'm wrong, is we all sit at this table and we represent a group of different districts within our division. So the way that I look at it, I speak for North Idaho and I vote in accordance to North Idaho. Wendy votes in accordance to Southeast Idaho in Division 6 at the current moment, but will be Division 5. It's the same thing. So that person who is appointed by the Governor, what if they don't share the interests that the rest of us do in this? And so who do they, who do they represent? That's my thing. It's, it's supposed to be representative of the different districts and the different divisions within the state. So my thing, if you want to have five, I don't have a problem with having six Commissioners, but if you want to do something like that and you're modeling after the Wheat Commission already, why don't you have it so that the Chairman has no vote, but yet runs the meetings and can steer the ship? But the other five, there's your tiebreaker vote right there. I don't know. I just, I can see it being a problem down the road with, you know, you get somebody in here that is only serving the Governor's interests, but not necessarily the divisions or the district's interests. It seems like there would be a conflict there at some point in time. I'm not saying right off the bat, but I'm just saying down the road.
Yeah.
My two cents.
So I would like to weigh in on, on that. This is Wendy Pratt. So there's lots of different ways that states organize the way they deliver conservation money. I was just looking at the NASCAP site and like Washington has three regional representatives, one representative from the conservation districts. They have someone from the Department of Natural Resources, someone from the Department of Ecology, the Department of Agriculture, Extension. I, I see a different Eric. I think the Commission represents natural resource interest in the state. We have, we're regionally distributed, so we have knowledge of the districts and the resource concerns within the state. But I see IASC as the representatives of the district. Do a good job of that. That's their mission. They're funded by the districts. Commission is funded by the people of Idaho.
Right.
So I kind of have a different problem with this. I think this narrows the scope of the Commission. And in this environment, we don't want to restrict narrow limit. We want to broaden. We want to be creative, flexible, adaptive. And that means mission spots should be not restricted to just to the division. They can put forward names now, absolutely. But to restrict the pool of candidates to only what the divisions want, I don't think that's the direction we want to go. We absolutely need to work on our culture and get the communication between the districts. And the Commissioners improved. We've got to do that. It's a two-way deal and we can work on our culture, but putting parameters around it. I think that's how institutions become obsolete.
I can see what you're saying. I can see what you're saying. And I think that goes to hand in hand with getting the public educated in exactly what we do. But that entails bringing people that are not necessarily involved in conservation into the fray to let them understand what it means to be in a division or in a district or, you know, what the districts do. So I can, I can, I can see where you're going with that. I understand what you're saying.
You know, Chairman, could I jump in yours to Eric's point that under this new legislation, there would be six Commissioners selected based on division recommendations, the division submissions to the, and you suggested having one selected at the discretion of the Governor opens us up to to a vote, a voter, a voting member who may not be representing any district. Remember that under current statute, it says the soil and water conservation districts may submit to the Governor a list of up to three names for each vacancy on the Commissioner. And the Governor may, in his discretion, consider any such submission in the appointment of Commission members. That means he has discretion today under existing statute to select five Commissioners of his choosing, whether or not they've been submitted or recommended or by, by any division. So we're going from from five Commissioners potentially picked at the Governor's discretion to now just one sort of pick without divisions input. I just, true, remind you of that.
And Mr. Chairman, I'll mention maybe the Wendy point as well. You know, I, I think it's good that Representative Troy, I think she struck it out up top, but then added it back in a couple pages in. But, you know, I'm willing to help out or I think our board's willing to help out in getting the Dean of Agriculture more involved or a representative from his shop, more involved with, with the Commission as much as you guys want, but some of those kind of positions too, where they're, you know, they, they can help out, be at meetings, kind of see things where, where the College of Agriculture Life Sciences, all those different kinds of things. We, I think we all would, would support something like that, trying to get more involvement from other agencies or under other universities, those kinds of things too. But that language is still in there too. And yeah, we're happy to help whatever you guys want to do on those kinds of things too.
And Benjamin, I'm not suggesting that's what we should do. I just, and maybe, maybe how we've got it structured isn't the best. I just wanted to make the point that there's a diversity of ways that states have decided to distribute state money and that was another example. I just want to make one more quick comment is we get compared to commodity commissions. And we need to be clear that the commodity commissions, Representative Troy mentioned several of them. I think the barley, the potato, the pea maybe are listed as state agencies. Well, they are funded by the commodity producers. We're a state, we distribute state funds. So, you know, she mentioned that best practice was to have representation from the different divisions as they do in other commissions. And our commission is different in the funding. Evidence. I just want to make that point.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think that's a great point. I would say that, you know, from, from, I would think from the Association's perspective, from individual districts perspective is, yes, the funding does flow through you through trustee and benefits, all those kinds of things down to the districts. But what would you rather personify? Would you rather personify DQ's role in, in, you know, what they require? Or would you rather personify closer to, in the actual practice, not, not talking about what's in code, what's not in code? I would, I would see this Commission as wanting to personify more of a, you know, hand in hand partnership with districts. And I think you guys effort to do that. I'm saying that, yes, I think you're making the valid point that you aren't a commodity commission. But the more that you are personified as that and act like that, the, I think the better for districts and I think the better. I think that's what you guys want to do in the first place. So I, I'm not trying to say that you aren't, but.
Well, I would hope that we're not here to derail this. We're just, we're just wanting, throwing curveballs at you guys so you guys know what's coming at you when it goes through the process. So.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, Mr. Mike. I want to address, you know, Eric's, you're talking about the seventh, going to a seven-member board of the Governor appointing. I think Benjamin kind of hit on it, but here's my take on it, hopefully. It gives the Governor, at certain points in time, this Commission has needed some expertise in different fields that weren't really represented by sitting Commissioners. The very first one was almost 20 years ago when the RCRDP own fund had some serious issues. Is that a good way to put it, Kerry?
One way.
I mean, and it was before anybody in this room's time other than me. And that's when the Governor, the Governor said, okay, we've got, we've got to have somebody on this Commission that has a serious banking background for some checks and balances. And that's how that, that started. And I think there's times and there's can still be some times coming, I can see coming down the road where the Commission might need to have somebody that has specific expertise, whether it is in Fisheries Recovery, whether it's banking, whether it's water quality issues that, I mean.
I totally understand what you're saying.
But, and I think, I think we leave it to the Governor to appoint somebody that I don't, I think he's going to be a representative of everybody. I don't think it would be just. At least that's what I would hope.
Okay, so I know what you're saying. I can tie it into what she's saying as well. Because by hamstringing the districts, by saying that we're only going to pick what we want on the Commission, it leaves it up to the, to the districts then to go out and get new supervisors that don't know anything about conservation and educate them on conservation. The bankers, the water quality people, those types of people that you're talking about and have those names submitted in the list. So I see there's both of your points. I get what you're saying. I'm just worried about having a conflict with something that is conservation driven on this board and somebody in a state on the Governor's side, because basically, we serve at the Governor's purview now.
To start with.
So you put somebody on that doesn't necessarily, that's tied up in the politics oicy or whatever, to throw a monkey wrench into the whole plan that's going on here. So I'm just, I'm just being a devil's advocate here, but I think that when you say that the expertise is there, I think it's an opportunity for districts as well. Sure. To get people involved at the, at the county level, you know, to get educated in that kind of stuff. And it goes back to the education part, which I've been harping on for years around here to get everybody to understand what we actually do and what we're supposed to do. We're a voluntary agency. We lead voluntary conservation efforts. We're not a regulatory agency. We're here to help people do projects on their property. And then not have a penalty of law that comes down if you don't do that. And I think that's an education thing that needs to be pushed hard, not only at the, the House level over here, but at the county level within the district. My two cents. So.
Okay.
Chairman. The response to that too, is keep in mind that if there's conflict, it's one vote.
True.
On the board.
True. I get it.
So, yeah, I mean, it's, I understand the idea of conflict, but sometimes conflict's not always bad. And theoretically, if you had six Commissioners united in a conservation minded thing and the politics got in the way of it, it still couldn't stop.
I get what you're saying. I get what you're saying. I just, I don't, we need to be making sure we're trying to make this run like a smooth oil machine most of the time and not have conflict and, you know, politics involved in this nonsense. Want to know the truth. To be here, so.
Chairman.
Yes.
If I can make a comment. And there's a part here, I guess, and it was kind of alluded to by just recently, you've been on this page seven, lines 10 through 14. Says Commissioner Members Shall, so that, hell, there's no choice. It has to be, shall be chosen in view of demonstrated expertise. And they list. And they list knowledge of conservation districts on the function, knowledge of production, knowledge of banking, um, or similar financial experience. So they have, each one has to have all three is the way I read that. They can't have one or two, they have to have all three. And my point being that the more components that you add to that, the more narrow the pool of candidates becomes. Now, it can be, and then the last part of it, or is the experience as a county commission? Now, all of that can be set aside if someone's a county commission. So I guess what I'm looking at from coming from as a loan officer is it seems like the pool would be extremely narrow if they're required to have banking as well as conservation district and production. I don't necessarily have a solution to that, but I, well, it does seem like a extremely narrow pool of candidates if they, they have to. And it says shall, it's not an option, they have to show that, so.
That's, that's a, see, we've learned all sorts of ways that the, that the words, what they mean.
Oh, yeah.
Because of our Rules Reduction Act and we've been schooled pretty hard if I've been here. And that would be one that I would change to make, not shall, because he's right.
And yet, Chairman, if I could, again, that statement is right out of existing statutes. Statute that is already.
I know. But I'm just saying, you get somebody that when you open this up at the legislature and they're a stickler for this kind of stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I'm just, it could, it could be a problem. So that's a simple.
Back to, you know, clearly theirs, but maybe this is a good time to maybe revise.
As long as we're revising, yeah, clean up some of those existing rules for sure.
And of course, not always have these, it shall have that experience. Uh, what's the definition of that experience? All of us have banking experience. If you want to get right down to all of us, don't you, you balance your checklist. You go to bank, you have banking for it, so.
But not all of us. Not all of us are producers. So I, I get what he's saying. It narrows that down and then that, that's a, that's a simple language change there. But just to take the ambiguity out of it.
You know, a shall is pretty legislatures.
Yeah.
Anyway, thank you.
So we'll be back to that.
Thanks, Benjamin.
Thank you, Ben. Okay, moving on. On partner reports, we had Representative NRCS, is she still there?
Yes, I am.
Would you have some words of wisdom for us?
You all are doing great things, so I appreciate all your efforts. I'm glad you guys get to make those tough decisions. Uh, you know, we're all just trying to, to get through it NRCS. We're, we're caught, we're ranking applications now and funding up contracts now. So we're really busy, our field folks are super busy. We're still rolling in some information with the, the climate smart ag, which is still to come. So lots of things are happening in our NRCS world right now. So, um, I can take any questions. Curtis will be back March 14th, so he'll start resuming your meetings the next time you have one. Uh, is there any questions from me at this time? I know y'all are having meetings coming up too, you're going to be going to.
Okay, so courtesy back March 14th, I suppose back in February, wasn't he before?
Yes, it got extended. So he had to help out for a little bit longer, so, but he said this time for sure he'll be back March 14th. So you're right.
Is he going to try to, well, March 14th, your division age are about over, aren't they?
Well, summer's starting and he's still going to try to, to go to some of those because he is in town. So he's kind of shuffling his schedule a little bit. We also have our area conservationist, Tricia Crickcroft for Area West, and then Mark Olson for Area East will be attending, if not in person, virtually as many of those meetings as they can. So we're, we're still going to get representation at the district meetings.
Okay, and so what's your current COVID policy?
So current COVID policy, it continues to change. We have biweekly meetings with our national group and Idaho's looking pretty good right now. We are, um, some offices are up to as much as 75% staffing and allowing visitors by appointment only. Uh, when COVID spikes, then we have to reduce those down to 50 or 25% with uh, no visitors. And so it changes every week. We, but this week, we've had a good, we had a good week last week and we've been able to open up more of our office to a higher staffing percentage. So we're, we're working through our return to work. Guidance is coming to us as we're trying to, you know, get back to more of a in the office. You know, we're hoping by summer, but things continue to change. So we just, we're, we're, we're getting information out to the offices as quickly as we can. And so it does change. Unfortunately, it seems to change sometimes week to week, but right now we're doing pretty good and folks are able to come into a few of our offices.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so people have questions for NRCS? Okay, and you said that, uh, you've gotten your, I remember right the first, you talked about equal for men. Where exactly are you with that process?
But it depends, we have some, some of the, the funding pools within that we're ranking right now to fund. We have like our CSP is open right now, they just posted that last week. So we're kind of, it varies depending on which fund pool folks are applying for and kind of where we're at. So it just kind of varies, but we are trying to get some contracts started. Offices are trying to get them written so we can get some obligated sooner than later. We are still in a CR, as you all know, uh, that got extended to March. I want to say it's the 11th, so we're waiting, we're still waiting for our budget. So we're continuing down that, we're hoping to get our budget by the middle of March for the rest of the year.
All right. Anything else anybody has asked? Well, thank you very much and tell Curtis hello for us and we're expecting to see his smiley face in the future.
So yeah, no more extensions. I, I will reiterate that to him and I'll stay on till about 10, 15, 10, 20, and then I've got to hop off. But thank you all for letting me attend.
Thank you very much. Okay, any other partners want to say anything at this time? Okay, with that, we'll move on to agenda review. I don't know of any changes that need to be made, so like general standard has written. That moves us down to the administrators' report, Mr. Trucks.
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioners. Uh, I start off with a legislative committee presentations recap. On January 20th, I presented our rules docket to the House Ag Affairs Committee, who approved it without question. February 1st, I presented our rules docket and annual report to the Senate Ag Affairs Committee. Following my annual report, Devin Fielding, the ISCD Division Five Director, presented an outstanding conservation district report. The committee approved it and the rules docket and had no questions related to the annual report. And Devin really did do a great job and I so much appreciated having him there to partner with us. And, and I, I could, just watching the committee members, it was, it was obvious that he is a very effective presenter and I appreciate him being there. At six o'clock that evening, I crashed while skiing at Bogus Basin, was unconscious for two hours, then awoke to learn I sustained a concussion and broken an arm. February 2nd, two of our amazing staff, Crystal and Joe, stepped up and presented our annual report to the House Ag Affairs Committee. I didn't see much of that because I was under the influence of, what's that stuff they shoot into your arm to make pain go away?
Morphine?
Morphine. Devin again. Yeah, yeah, Devin again provided his impactful district report. February 2nd, Crystal and Rachel. It might actually have meant February 3rd. In any case, Crystal and Rachel, with assistance from our LSO analyst Rob Sepic, did a fantastic job presenting our budget to JFA. Our day, our DFM analyst, Matt Reiber, was also present and able to respond to a question which related to why CREP direct landowner payments were not included in the governor's recommended budget. And that was the only question that came up, I believe, at that hearing. And I appreciate again, Crystal and Rachel stepping in.
What was the answer to that?
The answer was that the governor's office was working on a legislative approach to secure that funding. And, and that, as things played out, ended up to be what happened. Uh, but at that point, we, none of us knew what all was cooking in, on the back burners to, uh, to make sure we had that CREP financing. The next item is the Joint Finance Appropriations Committee sets the commission budget for fiscal '23. Uh, on Monday, February 21st, which is just a couple of days ago, JFA did set the commission's fiscal year 2023 budget. And I can report on the budget setting at this time. Our, our budget, our motion for our budget was submitted by a JFA member, Representative Carolyn Troy. And uh, I just received this Monday when I came out of the, out of the meeting. She included in there, uh, the, the big thing that she included that hadn't been included in our budget request or in the governor's recommended budget was $264,000 for those direct landowner payments for CREP participants. We arrived at that $264,000 ask. Right now, based on our CREP manager's most up to date reports, we have approximately $220,000 worth of landowner payments that will come due the end of this uh, uh, fiscal, this federal fiscal year. And we added 20%, another $40,000 to that as a buffer in case we get more acres contracted between now and when those uh, uh, those payments come due. So that brought the ask up to $264,000 and that's what uh, what Representative Troy included in her motion and what JFA passed with it. But pass to JFA with a due pass recommendation and on to the, under the leg, under the legislature. So that got taken care of. House Bill Number 642, Benjamin and, and Steve and the rest of us addressed that at some length earlier today. So I won't go over that a great deal unless uh, there's additional discussions that commissioners want to have or anybody else wants to have at this time. I did have a little conversation with Shane. This is sticking here with 642 and, and I know some of our strong feelings about, about that legislation. And what I visited with Shane briefly about was commission staff and commissioners latitude or freedom, if you will, to, to try to influence legislators or the governor's office. That is to lobby for or against legislation. Shane, do you have anything you could, uh, any advice or counsel relative to lobbying on the, on the part of commissioners or commission staff?
Sure, well, so, um, using even the term lobbying kind of connotates using financial or any kind of other benefit. And so that's definitely something that's prohibited by the statute. So, um, 18 dash 1357 and 18 dash 1356, both make it a misdemeanor um, for public servants to accept or agree to accept compensation for advice or other assistance preparing or promoting a bill. And then it also makes it a misdemeanor to provide that compensation. Um, so just based on my quick review, I couldn't find any statute or rule that prohibited public servants from meeting with legislatures, legislature, legislators. Um, so as long as those benefits weren't going back and forth, that compensation. Um, obviously, you know, the political considerations that go into an agency talking to legislators about um, possible bills, that's outside my scope, um, just because it's not a legal determination. So yeah, don't be changing hands, don't be changing money, you know, when you're talking about this kind of stuff.
Okay. You know, I would add to that, thanks Shane for that, that, that was really useful. Uh, I would add to that, that uh, in my visiting with the governor's office on this topic, uh, I was, I came away with the understanding that, um, if we are doing, and it, they, it refers back to section 67 dash 6602 of Idaho, Idaho Code, where lobbying is defined and lobbying means attempting through contacts with members of the legislator, legislature or legislative committees or an executive official to influence any legislation by the legislature of Idaho. The governor's office advised me that in, if, if we are doing any of that activity, trying to influence legislation and we are not registered lobbyists, we could get crosswise with the Secretary of State. If it came to the Secretary of State's attention that we were lobbying for, for uh, a, a, a certain bill or against a certain bill. And his, he said, this has happened in the past and what would happen? My understanding of it, again, this is through Delwin's filters, so take it for what it's worth. But is that if, if we went in, let's say I went in and visited with Representative Troy, made a strong case for, for her dropping H642, let's say. And then let's say Benjamin, a registered lobbyist, went in to visit with her right after I left. And she said, well, no, no, um, Delwin told me that it's a bad idea for, because of this and that and the other. Benjamin could say, wait a minute, Delwin's not even a lobbyist. How come Delwin's in here lobbying? And he could raise a complaint with the Secretary of State's office. And then the Secretary of State would get ahold of us and say, I don't know what would happen. Tell us not to do it again or, or something, I don't know what the, I don't want to find out what the consequences would be. But that's kind of the situation we're in, so.
You specifically, and this offices, we as commissioners can go and talk to legislature and say, we're here asking this question. I'm not representing the commission. I am an individual asking for questions to this.
And Chairman, like you and I spoke before the meeting, that would probably, there would probably not be a problem with that. Uh, I'll let Shane jump in, but if you're going to go, like we talked, if you're going to go as a private citizen and say, hey, I look at this bill and here's my issue with it. I'm not representing the commission. It's probably a good idea not to go with a fellow commissioner and say, oh, we're, we're here as commission, uh, I don't know, we're here as private. You know what I mean? You don't want to get too tricky for your own good, but.
Yeah, well, I think that most all the points that were for, against it were addressed today, so hopefully it gets conveyed back to Representative Troy if it needs to be changed, it'll get changed, so.
That's a good point. And, and Eric, I, I can share with you, uh, this would be a good time to show that there's another tweak that I, I communicated to Representative Troy after she introduced 642 and pointed out some, some things. And she said, great points, Delwin, maybe we can tweak it some more next year. So I don't know that we're going to see changes to the, to that, in that legislation unless you guys are, are effective with, you know, your representatives, your senators, that kind of thing.
Right.
But, but, but I wouldn't, whatever happens or whatever passes bill this year, that's not, doesn't have to be the final word forever. In two, we can come back and, and, and we will need to come back, I, I believe. And Mr. Chairman, I will throw a point out there. For years and years and years, we were all told, oh, don't ever open up, do not ever open up district law. Because if you open up district law, we're just going to get their, they're, they're, they're just going to cream us and they're going to do this. The state legislature could just change and change and change and change and change. It's over years, the commission, the association and member districts were scared to death of ever trying to open up district law because of the SOCOM. Now, we've done this the last couple of I don't think it's as big a elephant in the room as we were led to believe. I don't think there would be anything to matter, whatever happens this year. And if we don't get all the changes in it that we want, I would see no reason why we couldn't have that begin next year and tweak it some more because Delwin, and I know the conversation you had with Representative Troy and it's been relayed back to me, it's some of the things that Delwin brought up. And they're very solid points of things that are in that statute.
That should, that probably shouldn't be in there. So I I think that's a good way to put it, that we can not not be afraid to come back and tweak this.
Some more as needed.
As needed, right.
That's probably a good point. So there is always that concern that somebody might sort of curve my, but that's life.
Right, right, right.
Once the law, you gotta.
You know, it's like skiing, you can crash and break your arm, but why would you not go skiing because you might crash and break your arm? I don't know where that came from.
Except for during a certain period of time next year. No longer lab goes.
Yes, I'm requesting a moratorium on skiing during presentations.
The walk pa discussion, you weren't going to or what, or you're gonna bring that up later?
That is a different agenda. Um the other thing, the next thing Chairman though that is on my administrator's report. Relates to Commissioner honorarium and travel, but just the purpose of bringing this item up today is to stimulate discussion and thought. Related to how we can manage costs associated with board honorariums and travel. I suggest we begin the discussion today, sleep on it a while, then revisit it at a later meeting to take what action we may choose. Considering the possibility that our board will grow from five to seven commissioners. I have discussed with Rachel the necessity for us to set a realistic budget for Commissioner Travel and honorarians. During her financial report, Rachel will present information about our current budget. In reviewing Rachel's report with her, it became apparent that we, staff and commissioners. Need to develop processes that will enable our financial officer to have access to timely data. That is, we can benefit by tightening up the submittal and processing of travel re travel reimbursement vouchers and honorariums. I know some Idaho state agencies have a requirement, rebirth reimbursements must be submitted within a certain number of days. After the travel occurred and failure to do so results in no reimbursement being paid. While I see no need for us to adopt such a rigid policy, I'm quite sure that with everybody contributing ideas. We can improve the process for all, and I suggest that we hold the discussion on this until Rachel financial report, which she'll. Uh present up to date data on this, but I wanted to introduce it as part of my report this time. Because it is a concern and an issue that I that I'm dealing with. The final uh note was on the Larry Bran- Brandon Idaho Egg Summit, which we were all in town for and you all. Participated in beginning Monday night. Uh congratulations to Commissioner Pratt and her husband Mark earning the Governor's Education. An advocacy award presented during the egg summit. That was that was wonderful to see. The the final item I have is the upcoming commission meeting schedule, and you see our next meeting, a regular meeting, is scheduled for March seventeenth. Uh ten to three mountain time here in Boise.
You know, at that time, sometimes we have skipped March's meetings and we're involved in division meetings. Are we to the point where we can do that again this year or what?
I believe we can. I don't expect any any uh really pressing.
By Zoom and I call it special meetings, but.
Yeah.
It's been kind of our practice is Marches that we've skipped.
Good catch, excellent point, thank you Chairman.
So that's present time is canceled.
We consider it canceled.
Wendy and Eric too.
Well, something something maker comes up.
Haven't just. We got a phone.
So, Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Romer, I wanted to weigh in just before we kind of move along, is this a good time to do that?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so before we get beyond this whole legislation thing, uh I've been listening to all the discussion, obviously. And I just wanted to say that um change, uh which is what this legislation will do to the structure of the commission, et cetera, et cetera. Maybe not necessarily the structure, but um uh how commissioners are selected and that kind of thing, you know, it's not a bad thing. Uh really to uh revisit and take a different direction and uh improve on things. Unfortunately, I see this legislation uh as a little bit of retribution for what we have gone through in the past couple of years. That part is unfortunate, but that doesn't mean it's uh not a good piece of legislation and can't be beneficial as a whole. So that is what I wanted to say, and then also, Mr. Becker, I know you're there, and speaking of um. Uh relationships with uh legislators and and. Uh putting guards in place and that sort of thing, I do appreciate that advice, I think it's very important, we certainly want to be above board. Uh but also I would like to say that uh Mr. Becker, you have some relationship, familial relationship with Representative Troy, is that correct?
Really, I didn't realize that.
Okay.
I think everybody in this room knows that.
Okay, I just, I wasn't real sure, but I wanted to um uh be be sure that I wasn't wrong in that, so. Anyway, I've looked at the legislation and as I said, um. Uh you know, it could be very beneficial as a whole, so that's all I wanted to say, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Jay.
You're welcome.
Okay, so that finished up your report, Delwin?
He does, yes.
Item number five is resource conservation, Mr. Hobel Heinrich.
He's in his office because it got a little crowded.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'll be right here. Put my loan stuff away. So commissioners, uh first of all, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yes.
So uh wanted to present the uh the R C R D P uh. Program update, uh first off, as far as the marketing, um I did attend the Idaho Irrigation Equipment Trade Show. And the conference in Idaho Falls uh to pro- to promote the loan program. Um that, not really sure why, but that was not well attended. Um it was, you know, it had gone for a number of years, that was, it was unusual, the the number of vendors was down. Probably by a third and the um. The, as far as with the farmers and ranchers, they're just hardly in there, so that was kind of a unusual situation there. But I did talk to a couple of dealers, so that was helpful there, got some information. I have been meeting uh by Zoom and conference call with a a number of districts talking about R C R D P. And the way I approached that, um and as you may recall, you as a as a commission asked me to do that. Um and so what I've done is um I would review their five year plan and look for opportunities and then. Um essentially. Try to have a discussion, uh we would have a discussion about ways that the loan program could help each individual district with their particular. Um goals, conservation goals are trying trying to achieve, so um. The districts, uh as you see listed there, um met with the the Gooding and Power and Lewis and Bonner. And this is in the order that I met them, it's not like it's alphabetical, so Gooding, Power, Lewis, Bonner, Twin Falls. Bruno River, Adams, Hawaii and Idaho's districts, but also um. At the time I submitted this, I had more that um that I met after that, that I've since met with the east side, uh the west side. Uh Balance Rock and the north side, so um a number of districts, it's it was um. It's interesting, some some districts uh had questions and there was good discussion and others, um you know, it didn't didn't have a lot. To um didn't have a lot of questions. So it's definitely some food for thought, um I think the loan program is definitely uh on the district's radar more so. Uh after that. And then um we'll just, we'll just see what happens, so um. You know, some of the ideas that they had, we haven't um we haven't done before, I mean, there's things like uh the the recharge. Uh I know the north side was interested in things like that. Um there is some questions about some new technology um that uh what essentially we were in the process of. Because it's, some of it seems really new to me, and I didn't detail that out there because um I left it as um. The. Well, I I asked our engineer, Bill Illabridge, and then some of the the field staff. To look at this and we we would kind of put our heads together and study it, um because it's some of it's some pretty new and different technology. So um we'll just have to wait and see how that goes. As far as the uh loan activity to date, um had thirty three loan inquiries. So far, and we we've had eight, received eight loan applications in the fiscal year. Uh one of them is in process still, and uh we've approved seven loans valued at five hundred and twenty two thousand dollars. Um two loans were denied, I also mentioned to you, um there's an attachment to cross reference with this that. Uh that Delwin or administrator uh prepared for the legislature and just to cross reference there, it shows that. Uh compared to last year, um you know, our number of inquiries is up quite a bit from just in seven months, we have thirty three inquiries versus twenty one. In the entire year last year, uh applications about the same nine versus eight. Uh applications denied or withdrawn about the same three versus two. Uh applications pending the same, new loans approved about the same, but in seven months, we've approved seven. Uh versus six for all of last year, the other uh metric that um. Uh Delwin and I talked about was to include the value of the conservation projects, because I, in a lot of ways, the loan, I feel like doesn't. Really demonstrate the the whole value of that particular project, but the value of those projects is much larger in the first seven months. One point one million versus about seven hundred thousand in all of last year, so. I I know that uh there's still, there's some applications uh coming, um some of them are quite large. Um expecting one, a very large one any day now. Um and then a lot of that, we'll just kind of wait and see, related to that, um. And I'd mentioned to you before how the equipment costs have been going up, we we hear about that, about a number of of things. Um you know, fertilizer and and other inputs. The PVC pipe has gone up dramatically, pivot costs of pivots themselves have gone up dramatically. Um but also what's going on and what I'm what I'm learning, not only at that um irrigation uh equipment show, but also just. Just in talking to other people um since then, is the difficulty in obtaining the PVC pipe. The difficulty in obtaining the wire for the pivots. Um the one application that I am expecting here any day now, they talk about. Uh that dealer says the wire that they use for pivots, that's been on back order for four months. So that's something that concerns me that um even if uh producers want to do something. Um and and there's, it seems like there's plenty of demand, the the dealers are busy, but they're they're handstrong by. Not being able to get the equipment, and obviously if there's, if you can't get the PVC pipe, you can't finish the project, or if you can't get the wire, you can't finish the project. So that that appears to be an issue, um and we'll see how that plays out in the coming year. Um as far as the loan portfolio, we're at forty six loans, just under two million dollars, there are no delinquent loans, thankfully. Um and of course, the rates, you approve those, those are the same rates that you uh approved last fall. So commissioners, that's all I had, I guess I stand for any questions if you have about the program.
Maybe I have any questions for comments for Terry?
Uh Terry.
Norman had to step out for a minute.
Terry, this is Wendy, I I do have a question. Um inquiries received to applications submitted, thirty three inquiries, only eight applications. Can you talk to us about why more applications aren't coming in from those inquiries? But what do you think's going on there?
Uh sure, um Commissioner Pratt, Chairman Wright, it it um. This is pretty typical, um that. There's a a a fraction of the inquiries actually turns into applications. Um why is that? I'm not really sure why, um but it's it's always been that way since I've been here. Um and it's just. I I don't have an answer for you, but I I know that that's pretty typical. It just, getting an inquiry to translate into an actual application, um there's a pretty large attrition rate, so. I I I know that our rates, obviously, the one percent there, and and we they they tell us that, and we we all know that this is dramatically less than other lenders, but. So that I, I don't know if that really answers your question, but I I don't really know why they don't.
I just, I like the trend I see though. Yeah, thirty three in the first seven months, you know, twenty one year twenty one. And you've got eight applications submitted for the first seven months, and you know, you have nine for the entire year for twenty one. So I think it's working. I think we just need to be patient, let it let go, I mean, look at the, you know, look at the value. Between twenty one and the first seven months of, it's almost double. So, I mean, it's just, it's working, it's just, we gotta give it a little more time, I think.
Well, maybe.
There there's one application that's in the works, um uh it's it's had some challenges. Well, one of the applicants passed away, so they kind of had to regroup um understandably, so. Uh and there's another application coming, just those two applications along, if if we can get those um. You know, received and approved and all that, and it all goes through, that those two will probably amount to a million dollars.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just thinking that. That maybe it's between those inquiries and actually applications that we can kind of hammer down on what it is that's um. Kind of a roadblock, um if we've lowered the rates as much as we have. Is it when you list off the long process to them that they'll have to comply with? I mean, I don't know, just, I guess I'm requesting that, give it some thought, maybe. Ask a few more questions and see if we can just keep learning about about our process.
Okay. I can do that.
Chairman Chairman?
Yes.
Uh and Terry, uh I have a question that could perhaps help clarify some of that. What qualifies as a loan inquiry? Is this somebody approaching your table at a trade show and saying? How to talk to me about your loan, or or how far are they, how serious are they about borrowing some money to accomplish something on their land? That you count that as a loan inquiry?
Uh good question, um. Delwin, the uh what what I usually go off of is, um I mean, it could be at the at a trade show like that, it's it needs to. Be a fair amount of discussion as opposed to someone just kind of walking and not asking pointed questions, but. The vast majority are actually phone calls or or emails, their phone calls in, and we actually have, I have a process where I actually, we have a discussion about what is their project. And I explain the loan program and uh I I do not include in that uh projects that just simply. I can tell right off in the initial discussion that they don't qualify. Um you know, someone had called and they say, well, I've got the pivot put up and now I'd like to get a loan, and it's like, well, those. I don't even put down because um they've already built it, or they want to refinance or something like that. I I don't count those as as a real inquiry, but um. The the ones that I have an actual discussion with about the project and and talk about the loan program, that's what I write down as. As an inquiry, and then um. You know, and then I I wait to see, and some of them move quickly and some don't, and and the other thing too, I guess I'd point out is. Uh sometimes these people come back, um and it can be a year or two later. Um they don't always submit an application right away, so um that's a little harder to track, in fact. I I I have to have to tell you, if someone called me, you know, two or three years earlier, and then they call me again. I'm actually counting that as another inquiry, if if they've let it sit for a couple of years. And, but you know, that doesn't, I wouldn't say there's a lot of them that way, but that's. Anyway, I, I know that helps, but that's, that's how I look at it.
Thanks, Terry.
Is that the end of the discussion? Oh, on your. Report, you had two loans denied. You know, we never talked about that much. We just, you know, accept it and go on. Are you the only one that reviews that?
Chairman Wright, yes, that was. A, a number of years ago, the commission, commissioners delegated authority for me to. To deny those and of course they have the right to appeal those. So yes, it's, I, I've been the one that's been doing that. And, and the reason we did that was when I first came on board. Everything, I, 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 the loan officer had no authority to deny anything. And so. Even though there were applications that I knew were going nowhere. We, we still, I, I still needed to write something up. You know, prepared enough to where I could present it to the commission to formally deny it. So. That's, that's why the decision was made to allow me to deny those. Rather than go through the commission process, so.
You know, personally, I, I agree with the idea that. I don't believe that we probably want to see the information on every loan that's denied or withdrawn. But I don't think it hurt to have a second party review. And that review could just be a thirty-second kind of horse side. Okay, I had this loan or so and so. And I looked at it and I decided that X, Y, and Z did not qualify. I think the second party person to have just as a sounding board. Because sometimes as we get the thicker things, we don't always think of all the avenues or whatever that might be there. I think a good sounding board would be Dell one on those ones withdrawn. And I don't think it'd take very long, but I think that might be a good sounding board as to just in case you did miss something. I'm not saying you, you did, I'm just saying that does happen no matter how thorough you are.
But, but. Chairman Wright, yeah, I, I certainly hear what you're saying. I, I, I don't know, you know, you, I'm sure you recall that there are times in the past when. I have called you and I called Commissioner Trebisch about some particular issues I had with loans and that's. You know, I, I, I had been doing that, but you know, obviously.
And I agree, I've talked to you numerous times.
Yeah, and those are ones just trying to get some, some feedback and. You know, get some other, get another perspective. And so. Now that was while, and while I'm in the midst of trying to figure out. You know, which way to go on that. I mean, I, I described the loans, applications as they're easy yeses, the easy no's. And then there are the ones in between, which, you know, some of them, you know, it's just, it's just working things up. And then some of them, it's like, well, it's not working and, and. I study it and try and see if I can figure out a way to make it work. But. But yeah, I have been doing that. But, but on the ones that I decided to turn down, then yeah, not all of those, the commissioners. You as a commission have not seen all of those. Nor Dellin either, I guess for that matter. Or the administrator, I should say, because it's.
Okay. I just think it'd be a, a good idea to maybe, all those denied ones or. I don't, withdrawn ones, and maybe have a quick conversation, but we're on top in three last year and two this year so far. Don't believe it'd take very long for you to kind of scout why you did what you did. And you know, you said a lot, and I agree, most of the time I've talked to you, you've been pretty thorough. There's no question about that. But did we overlook something that maybe it just didn't show up and someone else might say, hey? Did you think about this? Or did you ask him that? Odds are you'll probably say, yes, I did. Here's the answer, but. That second set of eyes, I think would be a good idea.
Okay. I can do that.
Okay. Any other questions? Does that finish this topic?
Yeah.
Okay, let's, other people have. I believe we finished that up.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, Terry.
Thanks, Terry.
Okay, you know, your reports next.
The, the next item on the agenda is district support relationship building discussion. And in my memo, I note that a number of supervisors have suggested that. We put our heads together with theirs, develop strategies we can use to rebuild the commission's relationship with districts. This agenda item is an opportunity for an open discussion between the commission and any districts wanting to participate. The goal is to focus on collaborative ideas and strategies that can contribute to building and sustaining highly effective districts. And we had a couple of supervisors that actually travel up, are here in, in the meeting now, Clinton Aston and David.
Nelson.
No, David Nelson, appreciate them coming up and. They have, they have. Experiences with relationship issues with the district and, and we're looking at. As I visited with Supervisor Aston with, with developing ways forward that we can. Build an effective working relationship to help their district and every district around the state become. Like I told my staff, I want every one of the fifty districts to be a rock star. So. At this point, Chairman, I'd be happy to open it up and to David or Clinton to, to. Start off the discussion on, on ways to go forward.
So we were actually invited by you because you've been wanting to meet with us and. Wendy Pratt, and so we're invited by you, so we're here to listen. You had some ideas for us. You know our situation.
Yeah. All right, the, the, the situation that I see specific to, to the district that you guys are supervisors of. On is that. We need to, you have a history, a really rich history of being an awesome district that's accomplished. An extraordinary amount of good conservation work in, in Franklin County. Right now, that your ability to do that is severely hampered by, by. Things that have happened in the past. And I want to, I want to address ways that we can. And, and really brainstorm. I don't have a solution. I don't know what the solution is, but I believe there is. Every time there's a challenge, there is a solution. There is a way out. And it just because Dellon can't think of it and that should be not, not a surprise to anybody. But together, I think we can all of us use, use our creativity and our, and our ideas to, to come up with a way, with a way forward. I, I would say that. One of the challenges is, is seating a, a board and, and if there's some training. Or some resources that we can provide your district and others, this is not unique to Franklin's all our conservation district. Boards having a tough time keeping a full slate of, of supervisors seated. Maybe there's something we can do that, that we're not doing right now to help districts attract. Recruit, retain supervisors. That, that's one, one thing that definitely is a. I see as a deficiency that, that we can together hopefully come up with a, a, a strategy for addressing that.
We as a board want to help you get back there. So. And we want to let go of the past and I know there's bad blood and I get it. We want to help, we want to help Franklin County get back up on its feet.
And we've tried to get back on our feet. That's why we settled. We didn't settle the litigation because we did anything wrong. We may disagree on that, but we never got to finish because we didn't have enough money to finish.
Well, that's okay. And that's the past and we want to move forward.
Problem is, it's not in the past. As we walked into this room, Kathy Romer threw Franklin in the bus in a, in a way. So our, our challenge is this, is frankly. Step, he, he didn't suit individually, so he's a little. So. Our problem is the past is still kicking us in the teeth. Because of Terry running over to Lloyd McKnight saying, hey, you can't do contracts with them. We've got Quagga full. When we settled, we thought we could just, hey, start fresh. We put our big boy pants on, we settled, not for the right reason, but we can financially afford. But every time we turn around, our partnerships, you don't live in Franklin County, you don't understand. Part of the problem is, is the issues we deal with, nobody's even on board. I mean, nobody's going to want a risk to be on the board. Even in your own settlement negotiations, it says on there, the new board members on there have to sign off that they agree that the settlement. And they have obligations to that in the actual document if you're ever. And so you got to show that to anybody who wants to be a supervisor and they're, oh, I'm out. Only reason I'm on is I'm a responsible person. As soon as my terms up, I'm done. I'm not going to resign in the middle. I decided I wasn't getting it. I'm going to try to finish it out. But the problem, if you want me to know what you can help build mission, we've had injury as supervisors individually. As of this year, twenty twenty-one. I've shared that with Wendy, I've shared that with Norm. They're not willing to do what it takes. I think you need to go see your attorneys and see what you can do to alleviate the damage that's caused individual supervisors. That's number one. Number two, I would think that you need to share some net records straight. Franklin did not fraud anything. But that, that, that's still out there. At, in June, Dellon went to Chris Hatch, who is our secretary, not our manager. And basically says, hey, you guys know you can't turn a match for money that was returned to you from other districts for litigation. No kidding. Why would you even say that? So every time we turn around, it's those type of things. We've lost the Quagga station. That was our big, hopefully belly's out. We get eighty-five hundred bucks for the district to run. From the legislative commission. And where does that go for the next six years?
I, I, I totally understand that problem and been fighting for, since I've been on this board to get that changed. So. That's.
But it goes back out to litigation.
I understand that, but that's, that's the problem with all districts. So is the funding is not there for all of us, which. Your system particularly. Unique situation, let's just call it that. But we need to try to move forward and not be hung up on the past, whatever we can do from now. It's what we're trying to think.
You got to fix the past. You've got to come out and fix the past and just beat this up with all our partnerships we have.
Well, I can. Here that we've let it go. We're done. We've moved on from the past.
But you have, but we can't, you see, we can't get any. We can't get any help because of the past. We're still dragging that around. And I know you say, well, we got to move on, we got to move on. It's a little hard.
Well, I'm trying to figure out a way that we can help you move on.
And we, he just told you. He gave you an idea.
Well, there's only so much that we can do as a board. That's the thing. And you have to, have, you have to understand the position.
As a board, what have you done?
There is not much we can do. We got put between a rock and a hard place with this. We got pressure from the attorney general's office. Yes, we did. You weren't in this room. And we had pressure from the states, from the governor's office.
You weren't in the room when we mediated either.
Well, I'm just telling you from our perspective where it was at. It was not an easy decision to make, Courtney.
Yeah.
It was not.
But you could have made some other decision, but that in the, that's in the past, that's done. But what you can do is the future.
But you're bringing it up. That's the.
Because it happens every day. We go to Lloyd Knight, who's Dag Department guy, and says, hey, why can't we have Quagga? We've done Quagga, we've built Quagga.
Well, so then what do we need to do as a board to get Quagga back for you then?
That, what have you went and talked to Lloyd?
I didn't know anything about that. That, I didn't even know Terry did not watch you talk. I didn't know you watched Quagga. We didn't know. Yeah.
Last spring, and I talked to Wendy and I talked to you in October at our meeting.
I missed that. Did they give you a reason why?
Yeah.
What's the reason?
Because they wouldn't work with us because of litigation. Terry Murison went to him and just said, hey, you can't work with them because of litigation.
Well, maybe that's something we can do.
And that's what I asked you, and I asked you to go directly, and I have asked him for sure.
Chairman. Um, when I came from Department of Ag, I worked with Lloyd Knight on a number of things. A very reasonable person, open to, you know, ideas and things. And I'm not sure how much the director has.
Lloyd's been very honest with us, yes.
Yeah. So I, I'm, I'm sure he'd be open to taking a phone call.
If I can speak for nobody else in this room but myself, but I, I had no knowledge that Terry Murison went to anybody at Department of Ag. In fact, I didn't know that she had the kind of relationship with anybody at Ag where, where she could visit with them and had any influence on their decisions. But if that's the case, then.
But you knew that of June of last year because we, we discussed this.
I knew that you had lost your Quagga station. I didn't know that. I told you that exactly, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So here's the deal. We're looking at probably the district's done. We, we're at the point where. Part of it is because of litigation, and I think you guys need to understand this. I don't know. I think it's what you guys wanted. You knew when you went down that road that you were going to kill the history. I mean, you had. When we got down to the settlement, you sued us individually, you sued the district as a whole. And you sued Ike Crimp individually and, and Lila individually. State statute says that the district has to pay the litigation costs for the supervisors. And Lila and the district, but guess what? They can't all be the same attorney. So every time we met with your attorney, met our attorney, it was seven hundred fifty bucks an hour, it's two hundred fifty bucks an attorney. So there's our funds. We've been selling assets to pay attorney bills. So I mean, we have, we're nickels and dimes. I mean, we can sit down, we don't, we don't need to do that here, but. There is nothing left and there's nothing for, our last contract is kind of a unique concept because our last contract we had. You know, contracts take a long time. You hire somebody to get a grant to move forward on projects. You guys know that. You can't hire employees right now. It's tough. Once you get an employee, you're three years out before you get any contracts done. To finish those contracts and get paid, to pay in the rears. That's why big districts like we were doing, were doing well because we had history and we were saving funds to go chase dollars to. Do good projects. Um, our last project, we are going to hopefully finish up this spring and then we're done. Is the oldest water right in the state of Idaho, in Franklin, Idaho, the Dixie. Pretty, pretty amazing project that we're doing. Luckily. We've got George helping us do that. We couldn't do it. We got kind of in a bad situation where we lost our technician. We don't have finances to hire technician anymore. So I've only been on the board. I was in the thick and thin of it, worst thing I've ever done, like, but. I've not been on the board of some of the rest of them, like John Musler, some, seen some of those projects. So I've got to see this one through, you know, starting seventeen. Let's see if it takes that long to get them through. So I mean, our, probably our next meeting with you guys will be closing the district. We understand the process. We were preparing for that.
So I'll, I'll go, sorry to go back just to stop there. I want to make sure that my leisure that. That we know, we need one small bit of information there. I, I'm sorry, Clinton, I did not know exactly why you lost the Quagga station. I'm, I don't remember the details, okay? But the question I got for you though, right now is, is. We, well, I better rephrase it. I'll go, nothing else, but we can go to state of Idaho Department of Ag. And we can talk to them and ask simply why and what problem there is. But if we do that. Then do we say Franklin is still interested in this project or not?
I don't know that answer right now. I, I, I mean, we're kind of, that was kind of our thing that helped us. So I, I guess I would answer, I don't. Right now, we don't have the capabilities.
Okay, let's just. I, I want to dig down, because I want to figure out if that.
So part of your supervisor issues, so John Musler has a pretty big operation and he has an operating. So part of your supervisor issues, so John Musler, um, has a pretty big operation and he has an operating home. And you have a hundred and sixty thousand dollar claim that's out there on the judicial system against an individual. Would you loan somebody money when they're looking at that? Even though it's been settled, it's showing as a claim. I have a really good credit rating and I just tried to refinance my house and trying to want tire here soon. And just went through two thousand twenty-one trying to refinance my house to save one and a half percent. And they denied me. I'm like, what? I mean, I got a credit rating over eight hundred. I'm like, how does that even happen? So I start the process again. And it gets tied up again. And finally they answer, well, we got this claim thing out here for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
And I thought that that was supposed to be once it was settled, but all that was going away. That was my understanding.
Now, here's my understanding. So we have a sheriff deputy that was on the, the thing for fifteen months. Every time he goes for a, for a ju- cha- change job, he wanted to sheriff in care of county. He has to go through that. Can you imagine me to sheriff and say?
So that's a question. That's a question to Shane.
Why, uh, why is that still to be? I thought the settlement erased all of that and it was done. Why, why is that showing up on their credit?
No, I'm not sure it's showing up on their credit. It's probably showing up just because they were named individuals in the lawsuit.
But how long does it take for that to be expunged? Is that like that forever?
Well, you know, I'm, I'm not sure how long it would take. I assume it would go away once the, the balance is paid off.
Stays there forever.
But I mean, if, if his, yeah, if his credit score is still high, then it's probably not impacting that, but it's still showing up and what lenders can see.
And so you got a guy that's Greg Blue that's on the board for fifteen months and his shows a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. You have a dead guy, Vern Keller, that dies during the litigation. And his family comes in to settle the estate and they got a hundred and sixty thousand dollar claim out there. Now, they wrote him off of the claim. But can you imagine, there's not a more honest guy than Vern Keller. He gave his heart and soul to the district. And he got a hundred and sixty thousand dollar claim individually, I see. Code six dash nine oh three and six dash nine oh four shows that. But that's what we're dealing with, Eric. Is everybody in our community, we want to do a partnership. They kind of look at you. And I'll be honest. Lila signed a forged document. We're never gonna say that was right. But she didn't forge a document from Franklin soil. That was a water district document for match. And she was the secretary. She had two jobs. She was a secretary for the water district and she was our manager. You should have sued the water district. That's where the problem was.
We went off the advice of the, the person that was sitting right up there, not him specifically.
Well, you better fire your attorneys and hire some new ones.
She doesn't work here anymore.
I know, but that's the problem. So every time we do something, honestly, a lot of people still support Lila's part of that. So I, and the district is really in a tough spot.
Totally understand. We want to help as much as we can. And I think that we go on to Department of Ag is one step that we can make. Now, whether or not we're gonna make a difference, I don't know, but, but none of us were aware of that. I will tell you upfront, none of us were aware that Terry Murison had gone to the Department of Ag and jerked your Quagga muscle station.
So, you know, on night I had it the year before, they were taking for me and went to an island near two thousand, two thousand twenty.
Yeah, I, I, I didn't know. So. And as far as the, as far as the. Like I said, the way I understood it, the settlement wiped it clean, it's done. Not hanging over your guys' head, not any of that.
If we could do life over again, we wouldn't have settled. We would have just baked her up and closed the district at the time. And then we could have.
So had I known all this stuff at the time and been informed of this, I would probably have a different take on it too.
But I mean, you talked in the Capitol in two thousand twenty before, during the litigation, you just didn't run away very well.
Well, because I was advised to not listen to, I mean, it's attorney stuff. And it's, I don't want to get myself in trouble. And I want to, I want to get myself in a position, so take it under advisement.
Two things, I'm going back to the Quagga. We can go to Department of Ag and at least investigate and find out what happened. And if we can help there. If you don't want it, that's beside the point, right? The president, time to me. We need to visit that subject and find out if we did have influence that we're not aware of. Would you agree that's the least unreasonable?
I think it's bigger. I think you guys just need to understand the position we're in. And we're asking you, if there's a way you guys know. I know what I would do if I was sitting in your spot. And that's what I'm asking you. Now, whether you want to do that or not, I mean, I sit on, I've sat on other boards, I'm a teacher, I understand integrity of processes. And I know how to make relationships too. But I, if I was in your position, I'm, I, I'm doing what I started telling you what I do. I would see what I could do as a mission to change the history of what happened. And if not, part of my thing is, we shut the district down, give it three or four years, and then start a new district that says Bear River Water District. Maybe that's the plan. That's what I think the best plan is.
Well, okay, I'm back to my suggestion, uh, Department of Ag. Obviously, uh, she knows somebody over there too, but, uh. We need at least investigate to find out what happened and if there's anything there that we, I didn't know about her going. I did not really know, I guess, maybe I heard you and I didn't hear you. But we need to find out what happened there and if there's anything that we can do. Now, again, if they don't want it, that's beside the point. I think that we need repair or find out if, with Eric.
That's one thing, but.
Number two. Number two. I guess, I'm back to, I'm not sure if it's AG's office exactly where. I'd like to know just a little bit more about. How that final settlement did what to them.
Yeah, if, if it's still, if, if it's still showing out there a hundred and sixty grand. What can we do? I mean, maybe it's just a. I don't know, but we, we need some.
At least we, yeah, we need some education. And find out what the story is and what is showing up. I'm not sure how, why. When, how, when that comes off, where it goes to, I don't know that.
Idaho dog, search it under the record. Search my name, it's gonna come up.
So, when does that go away?
But if there's an explanation that goes with it, Clinton, you can get around those things because they happen. So. Let's just find out all we can about that.
Cause that's what you're asking us to do. So we need to investigate and find out why. That's, that's the standard. And we need to find out, I'm moving back to the Quagga, I'm curious as to what happened there too. Now, I got one simple question here, I think. Where was your Quagga station? Was it, now the one on Idaho County runs on the freeway there, I, fifteen.
Ours is on the state line coming in from Utah.
That's what I think. Well, Idaho County runs that one?
They did, they did for a year.
Who's gonna run it this year? Don't know.
Franklin County probably. They ran it last year.
The county itself.
So it puts us in another situation.
I, now, jump out of front by the fire. I'm still kind of rested knowing what happened there a bit and, uh, so. We'll find out, you know, we'll find out the best part of it.
And Lloyd knows me, we've talked before.
You know Lloyd?
I don't. He's a good guy. I, and I see where he, I see his position too.
Well, like I said, I'll, I'll speak for myself as a commissioner. I had no idea that that took place. And if it's true, I, I. I'm sorry as an individual, because that's wrong. That should not have happened. That should not have happened.
So I didn't really quite to the other, I think. But anyway, I guess we'll find out. We'll, we'll try and find out. That's all I can tell you. I'm gonna throw it back and we, I need to go to Department of Ag over with you. We can do that next week if you want to. I loved your answer.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not sure, just, I'm sorry, um, I'm not sure if the director, Celia, had any involvement. I'm not sure who you want to contact first.
Is Lloyd the one that's in charge of the Quagga invasion speeches?
Wouldn't you say so? Frank, we, we sold some of our assets that we used.
Well, we're trying to make it right, and that's a step that we can make it right. And as far as the attorney stuff and the, the record. Like I said, that, that, that irritates me because my understanding was that was not going to chase you.
Really, I think we all sit on boards. We understand we're at risk sitting on board that we get sued by a board as a board member. But never sued individually. I've never taken a dime from the district. You know, some districts.
Well, and had, to, to go back to your comment about redoing life, I never agreed to that, knowing what we know now. But we were sat here off, oh, well, five of us at that time, and, and we were, we were told. In order to get this insurance money, we have to do this.
Which you knew that. Now, you know that would never happen. Insurance company would.
No, and, and at the time, we were assured that that was, that was the only way we could get it.
And Daryl Early is the problem, because that's how he made his money, is fighting insurance companies. And our attorney said, yeah, they're playing dirty. You know what's sad is we had to hire Utah attorneys. I don't know if you guys know this, but I'll tell you the number. From two thousand twenty, when you guys filed, until we settled, because of the cost, and we didn't think it was gonna be that high, it was a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. Of taxpayer dollars went to Utah. Now, I-Crimp can be their own attorneys either. They had to have a firm out of the state of Washington, Kansas and Iowa attorney. I don't know how much they spent. And they never had to settle anything because.
No, they didn't. That was, that was the part that just.
But you know, Daryl Early, Daryl Early asked us as individuals to go out to our own insurance companies and see if we'd tell. But there was no other money to pay. We never had a hundred and sixty thousand dollar match anyway. The numbers don't even match. But the point is, is you never get, and six dash nine oh three and six dash nine oh four in Iowa state code. And we would have went the distance, it would, individually it got kicked down at some point, but we couldn't go that far. It's, it's a sad situation. But, but we're. But we're still, you get, he's told me this thousand, we're, that's the past. But I don't think you guys understand that past is, we can't do anything because that's still a big cloud around us. You see that with companies that you see it all the time. And the best way to do is kill it and restart someday down the road.
Well, we gotta move forward as best we can and try to repair what we can. So that's what we're gonna do.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Barr.
The one thing that hasn't gotten brought up. Clinton and I have talked about this, like, I, I've talked to several part of legislative folks around it too. Even though it is in statute that says that. Individuals can't be sued. We see that it happened. That individuals were sued. We need to make sure and legis- and, and this is gonna take some legislative work and we've kind of. Hope the bears with the stick over this, then. And brought this up, the individuals were getting sued. This needs to get fixed and we need to see to it that what has happened to the supervisors on the Franklin. Soil and water conservation district or that it has never happened again because that is. It's gonna kill boards in the state of Idaho if this, if this gets out. That happened to these individuals. And then even after the suit was settled, but this is still following them around. That is huge harm to an individual. I mean, as an individual, if, if I went to go borrow money from my bank. And I got turned down because of something like that. I think I'd be more mad Clinton is right now. I'm being pretty calm. I, I know you weren't Clinton, but. But we do, we need, we need to make sure as the association, as individual districts, and you guys as commissioners and commissioners. We need to, we need to move this forward so that this never happens. At least be some sideboards, but on, sure. And, and, and be specific about it. And I, and I think, and I think you guys, I mean.
What about, what about the, the, what about I-Crimp? They, they made it, they lead you to believe that.
Right. Well, and that, well, they are right. I-Crimp was right. I-Crimp was right.
I know.
It's a minute, it's an administrative, see, they're protected. Government, you basically did cannibalism. Government should never sue government. They're never, I-Crimp's never gonna protect that. They protect you from outside.
See, and that was the way it was explained to us that.
But, right, and that's, and that's.
That's wrong.
That's the way it's been explained to us too. And it's like, and now that it's had, it's like.
Yeah, that's, that's not the way it is.
I can, I can explain it to you. I understand it pretty well. It wasn't supposed to happen. Daryl Early should have never filed against individuals, because it's in code, they're not supposed to. But court systems don't care what should or shouldn't. It's gotta go through the vetting process. We never got to that vetting process. We would, there would have been motions filed and hey, this is outside of.
So if it would have actually went to trial, it would have been pissed, probably saying.
I mean, I can't say. But, but Darren again, I mean, I can see where those guys are sitting. Eric, you would be the same way.
Oh, I'm totally, you're absolutely right.
Personally, you know, you're not gonna.
You're absolutely right. I totally. But at this end of the day, I mean, when you're told, and you're, you're acting under legal advisement. I mean. Hindsight's twenty twenty. But I understand, and I, I totally agree with you. It needs to change. And it needs sideboards like.
I mean, I saw the narrative, and I mean, why you got settled, it's pretty easy to me. Our shit. But when discovery happened. Um, they were shocked that we opened our office door and said, come on in, we have nothing to hide. Our attorney said, let me in, there's nothing to hide here. The narrative was different than what they had sold. And so I knew why things were changing. But they still, it was a crusade, right? So, yeah. I concur with you. I would not, I'll never sit on board. As soon as I'm done with this, I've already been asked to sit on a board. And I'm, I'm out. Well, we have some state legislators that are afraid. For boards that they sit on right now, it's just like, you have an NRCS person in the state. That's soon to retire in the state, and his plan was to move back to a new location in Idaho and it's home. And he wants to sit on soil conservation board. He will not do that. That's sad, because he's got some good skills.
Yeah, so what's your discussions with legislators then? What, what can be changed? What, what can be done?
They, they, I mean, they're looking, I mean, the guys, they're looking into it, and I mean, they're. It's, it's a, it's a book of worms. What they're afraid of. But they're, 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 they're doing some, it's not gonna happen this year. No, I mean, I guarantee you that. But I mean, there, there's a couple of them that are looking at it. That's about as far as I could say, because I haven't really talked to them about it since we talked a couple of months ago, but.
Yeah, this is not, not what I agree to.
So. Thanks for your time. Thanks for listening. Thanks for the invitation. Like, we, we invited, we didn't ask him here, this is invited. He's been wanting, how many was this? We're actually up here to meet some others. So we've got some other things we're working on up here too.
Clinton and David, Chairman, yeah, I appreciate you guys coming. I really do appreciate the time. And you know what? I think it's been positive. And I think what we're talking about, and, and Steve, what you're talking about as far as legislative changes, protect board members, this kind of thing going forward. That's important, and that would be, be great. I think there's some, some things that we as a commission can do too. To change our approach to perceived, um. Perceived misactions on the part of boards. Whereas, now Shane, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is our deputy attorney general that serves us provides advice and counsel. Not dictates. It is still, we still, Shane, you could tell us not to sue somebody. And if we chose to, we could say, well, thanks for the advice, but considering blah blah, isn't that right? So we, I'm suggesting is that this commission could benefit and our partnership with districts could benefit by. The commission adopting some kind of a policy that said if a staff member or a commissioner detects something. They suspect is fraud, we do, there's a step or two or three built in before we go to the AG's office. Like, maybe go down and meet with the board members and say, guys, this is what we've seen. Can you explain this to us? Cause it smells bad to me.
Hey Dylan, I would, I would, I would try to remind you not to use the word fraud. We were filed, filed under a tort claim. Fraud is criminal. Okay, and if you want to put my handcuffs on, if I did fraud. I'll, I'll, I'll build the news for you.
Yeah, yeah.
But you keep using that word fraud, and that's what the litigation said in the tort claim, but fraud's criminal. If I, if I, if. But you keep using that word fraud and that's what the litigation said in the tort claim, but fraud's criminal. If I, if I, if the, if. Will you agree what the Attorney General told you to do was fraud? Throw me in jail. I'll take my arms. I know that's not the case.
Yeah.
But we keep using that word and see that damages frankly, because it's perceived that there was fraud.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm willing, I'd love to sit down with you guys. I still to this day don't know what we did wrong with man. I, I have. I, I, I would love to sit down and look at those past records and see what you guys thought and saw. That would actually help me as a person. Heal a little bit, because I, I've seen it. I've been in it. I, my, so when we did the supervisor stuff. My responsibility, I was voted supervisor to save money to deal with the lawyers and the attorney stuff. I drove the short straw. It saves money. So that all five of us talking attorneys and having attorneys at two hundred fifty bucks an hour explained. I couldn't make decisions, but I balanced the information. So I've seen it all. I've listened to the investigation, the, the, everything that you've seen, I've seen.
Okay. I, I, I hear you on that and that, that's a good, that's good advice. I hope. Not use the word fraud. I mean, what, what I'm, I, I'm saying, if we see uh something that we suspect is, or that looks just like. It's not, it's out of compliance with reporting.
And that's what your requirement is anyway. I mean, the norm file, sign every one of those mass documents that we. Turned in and were approved. He looked them up.
Well, the other, the other part, the other aspect you guys are not bringing into this, the doctrine. Sees everything too and advises on all of that. So. Correct, and you and I both saw that.
But I. Good points, Clinton, good points for sure. But I do think that the commission could. Could improve relationships with districts by. By working out some way of addressing differences of opinion, difference of a perspective with the district face to face.
I would call it administrative. It's an administrative procedure, administrative, hey, let's look over these mass documents. Let's make sure they're correct. That's administrative and.
Yeah, that's right. Shane, does that sound like something that, I mean, are we as a commission, uh, we have the authority to. Craft that kind of a policy?
Certainly, I, I've looked around at other agencies and I haven't been able to find an example of that. Plus, I got was the insurance. Sorry, what was that?
Somebody in the background.
Oh, okay, yeah, I, I haven't been able to find any kind of policy documents somewhere like what Walk Paw is gonna look like here. Um, but yeah, we can definitely look into that. And then to answer your earlier question, as far as the civil. The, the commission wanted to jump in on a civil suit, I can certainly advise, but at the end of the day, I certainly can't force you to do anything. Um, criminal world is a whole nother world as far as what a prosecutor is gonna do.
Okay, so the ownership is on commissioners, is that what I heard? So when all this happened, you guys couldn't have come down in the first place and just had a conversation with us instead of suing?
Honestly, David, how it happened, we could have if we had a policy that said, see, state policy as a state employee. When I, when I detect something. Like was detected there, I have to tell my supervisor, that's state policy, comes from the state controllers office. And, and then according to policy, she's supposed to get a hold of the Attorney General's office. It, which is what happened. And it was probably forty five minutes from when. What was detected was detected and till when, maybe an hour outside and the AG's office had a shutdown. As far as uh saying anything to anybody, they, they initiated an investigation. So we did, we did not have opportunity at that point. And that's what I'm suggesting here.
Well, that was on the criminal side.
That's right, that's right.
But not on the tort claim side.
So what, what's?
The tort claim side is when you file the claim.
That's right, that's right.
That's a totally, that's not criminal, that's a tort claim. That's like when you sue your neighbor, because you don't get along.
And there, if there, there probably, there should have been opportunity for us to. Go down to meet with you guys on that.
And we asked for that, right?
I'll bet you did. I don't know. I don't remember. What I remember about it and, and Chairman Wright, you can correct me if I'm wrong or or clarify. What I remember about it is coming down to where like some statute of limitations ran out. We had to either. File this paper, this claim, or we were gonna lose all opportunities to file it. We had a meeting and, and. Our day showed up with a letter from.
That we, in order to, because we didn't, because the criminal trial kicked me pushed back because Lilo's sick and having problems pushing it back. So she said, if we had any avenue or any way to recover funds, this was what we had to do.
And it was very tight.
Know ever any kind of. Talk or discussion about reputations after the fact. She made it cut and dry that, oh, you do this and I Crip will step in, they'll settle, it won't even go to trial, it won't do anything like this and that's it. And that's exactly what they told us. And, and, and I know that the AGs, they're gonna tell you, oh, it was under advisor, there was pressure. There was, this is, this is the part that made me despise this job, is I came into this for conservation and it turned into politics.
And you're on the same page.
That's, that's the part that I don't like about it because there was politics involved. We're pressured from the AG's office. And, and it was kind of the wink and the nod pressure. And then we had pressure from the governor's office to do the same thing. So. We got put and now we're falling on the sword. Because of the decisions that we made because of the, the device that we got. So, I apologize. Like I said, hindsight's twenty twenty. And things should not be happening. That, the, the, the way that I understood the settlement is it was said and done and that was it. But the fact that it's still following you around is wrong, is wrong. And I would be as upset about it as you are. And I understand. And I will do whatever I can to try to make it right. And I'm one guy, so.
Anyway, we take too much time, you get the other things to do.
Well, but, thank you. Like I said, let's try.
Hopefully, we're a little smarter and we agree that we need to do a little more investigation work on. And we'll get back with you. Is that so? I mean, those two things we need to do. And you're right. Is there anything else that? It was maybe within our.
Yeah, I don't know. We don't know what to do. We're struggling. It's.
I hear you.
Yeah, it's a tough spot. He, he's probably more neutral than I am to someone. Right. Luckily, he didn't get sued.
One, why did you still?
Right, but I'm, I'm on the same terms and I'm not running again. I'm, I'm not gonna be on here again.
When did you turn up?
December, December thirty first.
Of this year.
Yep. But we will button things up and. Before we're done. And we both, I mean, we've struggled with this decision and, and it's not a final decision, but we just, we don't see a way out.
The other session is. If there's something, what Paul, we can. Get the project, the one with the phones infused, the, they're trying to set it up so that there's a block there. So the timeline is going to be way more than they should.
You know, Franklin County stuff, we, we, we've looked at all options. Absorbing into other districts, which can be done. But none of the other districts want to take on the litigation like that. You would lose eighty five hundred bucks, but it's still be required for eighty five hundred bucks. And Franklin County is in a unique situation geographically. Oneida County would make the best sense because we share NRCS now. But there are more range and cattle and stuff. Our biggest thing is water. You got the Fair River, soil erosion, truly what a soil conservation district is. And that's where our key is. Fair Lake doesn't fit real well either.
What?
And Caribou.
I don't know, hypothetically. If this walk problem does come through. Is there a large project that could be done where you can, you can?
Like I said, we're, we're untouchable right now, like working with.
Well, I know, but on our side, what could we do?
I don't know. I mean, there's, I'm plenty of water projects in our area for sure. That's our, been our thing that we do. Is just that whole process. But as I look at it, adjudication is coming down our way. Bear River adjudication, one of our plans, we had some little bit of money saved. We wanted to help producers with adjudication. You know how that process is. And we figure soil conservation district could have some helps, train some. Just work and see, that's all that I, I think that's what's most stressing to people around this area, issue that stuff there. That's kind of, we would have been resourceful. We feel the weight of it. Don't think we don't.
Oh, right. Completely understand that.
But I just, I don't know, we've, we've, it's not like we've, we've looked at options. Anyway, thanks for your time.
Thanks for coming down. Thanks for coming up and talking to us.
Good. Well, move further discussion on that item. Uh, we're still on item number six reports. Is there any other things that the commission and the staff would like to discuss at this time? There are none. Uh, water quality program.
Thank you, Chairman. Starts off, my memo on the water quality programs from, for agriculture. References to January board meeting where you directed staff to work with our day. And partners to develop walk policy, which will include improved water use efficiency as a criterion for walk bot funding. The catch for your review is the draft walk bot policy developed by Deputy Attorney General Shane Bell. Shane removed any language not supported by statute, directing districts to conform to application and plan requirements. Shane's intent was to create a policy document SWCC staff can use in assessing and processing applications and plans. The policy will be available to the public, so applicants will be aware of how commission staff process applications. And what commission staff consider when reviewing plants. Shane also added the language you directed staff in January to include in the revised policy. That is to add water use efficiency improvements to the list of walk bot project funding criteria. It's items nine and ten in the bullet list at the top of page four. Turning to the attached draft policy, we will now review it to make certain it aligns with the intentions of before. We have the, a copy of that draft in front of you that includes. Includes Shane's notes and any other notes that have been added on the. Track changes on that word document. The, the only thing I'll, I'll point out, and I mentioned it to Shane this morning when we were on the phone, is that on page. Twenty five of the packet, there's a list that Shane included, which is from the, um. From the DEQ's uh selection criteria for. Egg BMP and three nineteen grant projects. And I suggest that we. Add into that list, which is a great list, but we need to add into there the criteria nine and ten. From page twenty three where. As you directed us to do. We added as funding criteria whether water use efficiency is improved. And or whether land use goals or ecological processes are limited by suboptimal management of natural. Of natural precipitation or by inefficient use of irrigation water.
Don't, if I may interrupt, the commissioners were mailed um packets that are numbered differently. So if you could go off of the word document pages, so the nine and ten he's referring to. Is on page five of the individual document, or they're gonna get confused.
Great. My mistake.
So five and seven are the pages that he's referring to.
Thanks, Crystal. The DEQ list is at the bottom of page seven and. The additional criteria that Shane added in there per your instructions is at the top of page five. Other than that, um. I don't know if you've had a time, have a chance to review this draft policy commissioners, but if you have and if there's any changes.
I have a couple. Questions or comments on page six. So the cost of funding this program should limit to maximum fifty thousand dollars per cost share. Uh, that's, what was, can that be changed? Budget cost, it's right there.
And this is Shane speaking. Um, I, I think you can change it. That was something I pulled from the other policy. Uh, I tried to keep those policies very similar as you had last time. Um, but I, I couldn't find any basis for that number other than that policy.
Seems like that number should be a lot higher.
I agree. A, and I see that uh that sentence continues unless otherwise authorized by the commission. So we're open, we're, we're, we're. We have the option, commissioners have the option of authorizing greater than fifty, but why that fifty thousand is there instead of. Some greater number. What would you think would be a more realistic or appropriate?
Was that being a more red question? As far as the projects that you, as you said, you made some comment the last meeting we had about the number. Because it was twenty million before and now you said it was closer to forty this, with current.
Yeah, that included a lot of infrastructure.
Right.
I know personal grants I've written the last three years, the last two to the EQ were sixty five thousand. That was kind of before the prices skyrocketed. So my latest estimate, I have three hundred.
Three hundred thousand. That might be a little much.
A little much, yes.
But I, I could see one fifty.
Let's equip, just for reference point.
Yeah, there's a.
And that, and that's, that's variable.
Right.
That'd be something you're doing.
For it's for an individual operator, your, your max had fifty thousand dollars. A year for the life of the contract, which is five years. So it'd be two hundred fifty thousand. But it's fifty thousand dollars per. Individual.
And a lot of times the equip is multiple practices or periods where this may just be a one shot deal, but. I still like fifty is a little weak.
Yeah.
Would you agree?
Yeah, and I think that fifty was. I think fifty was put in there originally. Because the projects were smaller.
Right.
But, but that way then, if it was over fifty, then the projects actually went to the full commission. And the commissioners would actually have to approve.
Okay.
I mean, that was kind of the, I mean.
Yeah, so it says unless otherwise authorized by S. So we would have that authority, authority if, if it was over fifty. It would come back to our board and we would decide.
That's fair enough, but do you think the fifties should be raised to start with, to a hundred, for instance?
You think so?
Inflations.
Last year.
Because I mean, I can see some hundred thousand dollar projects pretty.
Thank you.
Yeah.
But again, we can come back and at least have a hundred in there than anything else that power watch. You know, a lot of irrigation projects might be a, a pooling agreement type of situation with one, one person involved. All of a sudden that. Could change the picture a lot.
But I also wonder. Okay, so. The legislators are gonna look at this too, right? Because of the number that we're gonna be given. And I, I, I mean, I, I would like to think that this is gonna be an ongoing funded thing. But we're coming on all this money with ARPA funds to start this back up. And then say five years, we gotta come back, we're begging the legislature for money. And we have that number at above fifty thousand, they're gonna come back and say, uh, no.
They want to help more, is that what you're saying? They want to help more projects with less money.
Right, and, and, but see, the thing is, is trying to get the legislature convinced that to fund walk, which they've done. For a number of years. So I'm wondering, in, in, I'm wondering if we would hamstring ourselves by changing that. But, but, but because the language already says in here that we can come back and vote and change it. So I'm, I'm hoping, my, my thing is, we don't wanna make it harder for us in the future. I see what I'm saying.
Yeah, this is Kathy, Kathy Romer. I think Eric has a good point, and you've got to have a starting place. And maybe it's better to start, you know, more, uh, medi- medium or low. So I agree with Eric.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I mean, it's going to be what cost share rate are we thinking? Cause like when I worked on the EQ data, we were at like fifteen percent.
Right.
Cause we were with equal, yeah, through nineteen. So I mean, this is a fifty percent cut free zero hundred thousand dollars. Sixty percent cost share. So that's kind of there.
Right. And, you know, it also depends on how much Curtis is going to kick in. And then there's other, there's another fifteen million that Benjamin and I were talking about yesterday that is possible with the B M P stuff. So I'm, I'm, I'm thinking down the road that hopefully we can get this fired back up and the legislature will keep it funded. And that we're not going to hamstring ourselves by putting the numbers too big. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Definitely.
Well, I don't think there's anybody wants to change with that other word in there. So are there other questions concerning us? Somebody have, or things that need to be added? Other than what you made come, and I picked up two in the ranking does not include water efficiency. That obviously has to be a added. Okay. So now you want to tell us more about WAPPA?
Yeah, I can bring you up to date on, uh, JPEC's, uh, budget setting meeting the other day. WAPPA, of course, was not in our budget request, nor in the governor's recommended budget for the commission. However, Representative Troy had, uh, had done some work on in, including a appropriation for WAPPA, uh, which was going to be in the amount of ten million dollars over the next five years of roughly, uh, two million dollars per year. Um, that didn't get appropriately noticed on the agenda prior to the meeting. And so she had to pull that part of her motion from her motion, not, not ask for the ten million dollars until another budget setting meeting can be set. At which point the WAPPA ask will be properly agendized and properly noticed. So we're not, if, if the, if JPEC had acted on that part of the motion, they would have been acting outside of open meeting law and, and the, uh, the motion would have been inbound. So they're, they're going to schedule a new, uh, budget setting, squeak us in at some point. And we talked to Senator Craft Tree, who's carrying our appropriations bill on the Senate side, uh, Monday night. And he, he said, yeah, it's unfortunate, but that's the way it went down. So that's where we're at with that.
And he also felt like he didn't see any outside influence where we'll be sidetracked. And so our fingers are crossed that there's no curve ball for him, but he was quite confident. And obviously, uh, Representative Troy is also so.
Yeah. Well, I just want to make sure that, that, that this gets started back up and continues after the ARPA money's gone. So, and we need to make sure we try to structure it. And we have to prove ourselves, basically.
Yeah.
Sure. It's an open opportunity for that to happen.
It's a huge opportunity.
So I think we ought to be smart about how we set our policy and make it work and change it if we have to. Then come back and revisit change or whatever.
Great. Zach, further questions on that? Uh, so that's an action item.
Yes.
Uh, do you want to prove it as written with, uh, Delwan's comments that water efficiency be added into that last section where it's ranking?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve revised WAPPA policy as presented with any modifications agreed upon following board review of the draft policy.
I can second that.
Okay, the motion on the floor made by Commissioner Olson, seconded by Commissioner Pratt. Any further discussion?
Just briefly, I'm sorry, this is Shane. Um, if you go up to page one, I had a comment that indicated we need to pick an agency contact. I'm not sure if that's something you guys want to do today, but it will need to be included in there.
You want to put your name in there or Doris's, Strickland's? We're going to get the short straw.
Let's put the administrator in there. Put my name in there for a contact.
Great. Okay. So with that, request that you should accept that amendment to the motion? Mister?
Yes.
Motion maker, wait, it's up to the second.
Yes.
Okay. So all questions on the amendment to the emotion? Hearing none, we're voting on the amendment first. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, mo- uh, motion carries. See, now we're voting on the amendment with an addition. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Don't amend it any more times. I'm not going to do that as a little shit.
Amendment to the amendment, to the amendment, to the amendment.
Yeah, okay. Yes, sir. Well, thank you. Any closing words? Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Any closing words?
Seriously.
Thanks.
Thanks, sir.
I'm glad we're better than saying in Salt Lake. Okay, thanks, Steve. Okay, minutes. Item A. Uh, did just review January eighteenth's minutes.
Yes, and I will make that motion to approve those minutes of January eighteen twenty-two.
Name, go second. Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, we have a second by Commissioner Olson, approved January eighteenth minutes. Any question on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, Kelly. Appreciate that. Okay. With that, I think we're down to item number nine, financial reports, Miss Spencer.
Very answer connected.
We like.
We're just cruising along now.
Start with the financial reports, the, the fiscal memo. Um, the financial detail and fund summary, your today reports as of the month, it's the month ended, January thirty-first, twenty twenty-two is enclosed. On the FY twenty twenty-three budget hearing, our budget hearing to present the FY twenty-three budget request to JPEC was held on Thursday, February third. As Delwin mentioned earlier, uh, Crystal stood in for him and did a phenomenal job of presenting Delwin's part of the presentation while I presented details of the, uh, the actual budget request. Um, the only questions presented during the hearing were directed towards Matt Rider with DFM or regarding the prep funding. So they did take it easy on us, but it doesn't seem there was really any, any subsequent questions after that. And uh, commissioner honorariums, uh, below is the schedule of the honorary and balances as of February fourth, twenty twenty-two, included in the schedule, the amounts budgeted for each commissioner for FY twenty-two. At this point, we are sitting at twenty-one percent of the honorary and allocations remaining, uh, due to increased commissioner attendance at meetings, events, et cetera, over the, uh, basically the historical finances show. We are currently in the process of estimating expected honorary expenditures for the remaining forty-two percent of the fiscal year. Based on future estimated expenditures and adjustment may need to be made to the budgeted fund amounts using salary savings from the commission's vacant positions. While we're waiting for Delwin to step back in, um, below the chart there, fiscal and operations, the temporary part-time office clerk, Amanda Furman was brought back. We asked if she would be interested in coming back to pick up where she left off, and she accepted and now has been here since February seventh. And will be working nineteen hours a week. Her duties are to assist Crystal with daily functions and continue the work she performed in FY twenty-one by working on our continued compliance with the state's records retention policy as well as digitizing and properly disposing of records. Are there any questions on the memo at this point? Hearing none, we'll move forward. Amanda, did you want to come in and say aye?
There's a name, a face to that name.
Yes, the camera is right here.
I can move the camera.
We are so happy to have her back.
Yes, we like her very much.
Uh, Delwin's back. Did you want to talk about the honorariums first before going financials or anything?
Why don't you go ahead? Why don't you go ahead with the financials and then collect them?
Okay. Okay. Okay, so starting with the detailed financial report for the month of January. On the top left, under general fund personnel expenditures, we're sitting at just over forty-seven percent expended out of fifty-eight percent of the fiscal year completed. So as you can see, there's a percentage of expended is significantly lower than where we're at the fiscal year due to our ongoing vacancies. Uh, general fund operating expenditures, we're sitting at about seventy-eight percent expended, which is to be expected this time of year because all the major expenses come out at the beginning of the year. And something I do want to point out, if you look at, uh, management admin and mainly seventy-one oh one, index seventy-one oh one, showing a balance of two hundred seventy-four dollars remaining this year, um, over the, over the last few years, there's been a lot of creep into the RCRDP index, um, as far as management expenses. Just, just different things like with the coffee or, um, storage facility costs. Um, and just different operating costs as far as like our facility here in Boise. And so we've been trying to go back through and adjust that to a better allocation method to pull out what RCRDP that we don't feel should be in there. So this is kind of in a state of, of flux right now. And I actually have a reminder set right now, this month, I need to go back and review where we're at as far as our expenditures and review those allocations where we're at right now. So that's why at this point you're seeing, uh, a lot less of a balance left in general fund under management admin and that has been shown in prior years. Are there any questions so far? Okay, we'll move over trustee and benefits, of course, same as last month, hundred percent distributed. And our cash balances are shown on the right. Going down to professional services, index seventy-three twenty-five, there has been no activity in that other than a little bit of interest accrued on the right end of the cash balances. Moving down to RCRDP index seventy-three fifty-one, you see our personnel expenditures for fifty-eight percent of the fiscal year completed are about fifty-six percent. Just right on track. We don't have much of a vacancy, um, salary savings in that fund. Operating expenditures are at about twenty-two percent, uh, as expected. And moving over to the cash in the balance sheet areas, this is going to tie in a little bit. You can see received to date, this is actually slightly off because there, uh, was an adjustment that crossed over, over the end of the month where part of the cash received to date needs to be transferred into the revolving loan fund. If I remember right, that was right around forty thousand. And loans paid out at this point is just under sixty-five thousand dollars for the fiscal year. Any questions here? Okay, and move down to the revolving loan with DQ, no expenditures out of that fund. The cash balances is going to change slightly over the next, um, or when you see the February's, um, statements. And the exciting part here is if you look over on the right-hand side down at the bottom, you'll see that we no longer owe any money to DQ. We paid that off a couple of weeks ago.
Oh, but they still owe us.
The, yes, on our end, the money, uh, that we are still owed, yes.
And that is the seventy-one?
The. Yeah, it'll change a little bit when you see one that my adjustment comes through in February.
But, um.
But yeah, yeah.
They still owe us, okay.
Yes, yes. So, and as, uh, Terry Hobel Heinrich has brought up a couple of times, now that we've paid off that loan to DQ, we definitely need to look at what, uh, we need to create a plan for what we're going to do with this money because they have been paying quite a bit ahead of time. I'm expecting that this will be paid off probably within the next year at the most. Unless they slow down their payments, but they've accelerated it quite a bit, and that's why we went ahead and paid off the loan to DQ.
True.
So at that point, we're going to have this, this index sitting there with cash in the bank.
Okay, will that have to be extended in a certain timeframe or will it revert or that?
It's not, it's dedicated, so it won't revert. It's just at a certain point, we're going to be looking at no activity coming in and out. Our spending authority is only thirty thousand. We're going to have almost sixty in there here, um, just in next month. Uh, so we just need to plan what we need to do, what we want to do with that before they say, hey, there's no activity here. And then they remove that appropriation. So. Any questions on the financial detail report for January? If we move forward to, oh, Terry, did you want to say something? They are.
Yeah, everything's. So it's.
Okay.
But I, I wasn't sure that it depends on where you're reporting, because you're, sometimes your reports lag, so I can't remember what's in there, but it's, it's all paid off, so the cash is all there. So.
I think the last one didn't come in until after the first.
Yeah, and the adjustments that you go through until after using February, so, okay.
Yeah, so it may be timing issue, but it's a thirty thousand year spending authority, so assuming that continues a couple of years.
Mm-hmm. So we are there. We need to figure out what to do.
Okay.
All right, thanks, sir.
What can that money be used for?
Yeah.
It really doesn't have much guidance for that. It has typically been used to, uh, pick up things like, for instance, the, the air issue we're at with the laptops right now. Last year, we bought the tablets for the commissioners that came out of this fund. Um, it's just different things for operating for, as you see, it's under operating. It's, it's different things for operating for management of that fund and for the commission as a whole. So basically I'll have to delve into it a little more. Um, obviously it predates me by quite a long time. Um, to see exactly what we would be allowed to spend out of that, or if we'd be able to move any of that to capital.
Just operating in the office here, or is that? Will you use that for vehicle purchase? Is that?
That, that would be a capital expenditure, so that's, we'd have to get permission.
I believe, but, yeah, chairman, commissioner, I believe, one use that we put it to ye- some years ago. Remember, Chairman, when we, Terry was trying to do a video every year on a project?
Yes.
And that came from, from that, the spending authority we had, I believe that was some, some, uh, we spent six hours. Christopher.
Delwin, Mr. Chair, um, yes, part of the expense for past videos has been paid out of that fund. Um, all staff meeting expenses have been paid partially out of that fund in the past. Um, emergency computers in the past have been paid out of that fund. Um, as Rachel mentioned, as well as when it was decided that we needed to update the commissioner's tablets so that we As Rachel mentioned, as well as when it was decided that we needed to update the commissioner's tablets so that we could better accommodate Zoom, that came out of that fund as well. Those are examples of things. Nothing capital that I know of, because like Rachel said, we have to have special permission, but operating expenses can come out of that fund to alleviate the pressure on general funds and has been done quite a number of times over the last three years.
It's, it's basically just our cut of managing that.
So I guess you'll work and figure out what with Dylan, what we could spend some money on or what could be a possibility and come back with us. With some recommendations. Yeah, we just did not, we earned it, we just did not let the predator take it. Okay.
Hey, look forward to the financial summary report for January and I see I took my PDF printout with my highlighter colors. Top left there under general fund personnel funds, you can see that a remaining expected balance as of right now at the end of the fiscal year will be approximately ninety seven thousand dollars is the salary savings we're looking at. Go to the right under RCRDP personnel expenditures. As expected, we have a minimal balance expected to be remaining at the end of the fiscal year. Under general funds, operating funds, as carried over from the detailed report, at about hundred eighty five thousand dollars expended thus far out of general fund operating funds. Under professional services, operating funds, there's no change. RCRDP loan administration has expended approximately thirty five thousand out of operating. And of course, the revolving loan that we were talking about, nothing has been expended out of that this fiscal year. Capital funds, no activity there. We didn't have an appropriation for this year. And trustee and benefits are hundred percent expended. Are there any questions on the financial summary for the month ended January thirty first, twenty twenty?
Make a motion to approve the financial report of January thirty first, January twenty two.
Okay, a motion on floor from Commissioner Olson to approve January thirty first budget. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Olson's on motion, Terry. Okay.
Well, Commissioners, I'll, I'll pick up on this Commissioner honorary issue. This is a bookkeeping, sort of a, of an, of an item here. And we've experienced, we're, we're looking at just tightening up our reimbursement. As a provision of reimbursement to you guys and our honorary program, part of that will be to set a realistic budget for commissioners. So that, so Rachel can, can budget and manage those finances. Part of it is to tighten up the process so that when you guys submit a, submit a voucher or travel voucher or whatever, that you can know you're going to get reimbursed in a timely fashion. And so it's, it's both us here in, in Boise tightening up our program. And, and then just having a, a discussion with you folks about what you need for honorariums. And you can see that right now we're at twenty one percent of the allocations. The amount we had budgeted for honoring is remaining and we still have forty two percent of the fiscal year to go. So that's not necessarily, this isn't, this isn't that anybody's made a mistake. I appreciate, and I know our districts and our partners appreciate all the interaction they can get from you guys as far as attending meetings and conferences and that kind of thing. But, but for our purposes, we do need to know what to expect, just like any other budgeted line item we budget funds for.
Okay, so when I set these budgeted amounts, basically what I did was over the last four or five years worth of Commissioner expenditures and honorary. Obviously, the last two years were, were different because of COVID, reduced travel and all that, so that's why I went back further. But it appears definitely at this point that we're looking at you guys having, you know, basically a lot more boots on the ground here. Doing a lot more outreach and travel than has been historically done. So I guess that's the biggest thing that we're looking at, is being able to make sure to use enough of our general funds to budget for that. For, for the FY twenty three specifically budget year. So, so we need a better idea of how much is actually going to be outgoing for the commissioners. And as far as the, the travel itself, as of this point, I've asked Crystal to make sure to see, see me in on anytime she does. Any, you know, buy airline tickets or any travel arrangements that she, she starts putting together, just so I know that there's something coming up. I don't have any real ideas. I don't want, you know, I don't expect you guys to report every little move, you know, to its financial management, but the one idea that I did have while we were sitting here is so our Travel Express does have the ability to go in and get basically travel approval first. And that was one thing I was thinking that maybe Crystal gets airline tickets and things that maybe she could put one of those through, so it's in the system. And you either, you or I, or I would have the approval on that, so that I know it's there and outstanding and it's in the system. Yeah, yeah, so I can see what kind of expenditures I'm looking at coming out in the next couple of months. So if, yeah, if the commissioners are going to be doing a lot more outreach than has been the norm over the last few years. We're just going to kind of try to get a rough idea of how much you need to pull from the other indices.
Okay, so when you say some airline tickets, you're specifically talking about me.
Up on that.
Three times a year. You can bank on me coming down here three times a year most of the time. So, and that's in January. Well, I guess it depends on where conference is at too, I guess, but so maybe four. But, you know, November, January, February, and then June, if we have our June meeting, wherever that's at, if it's here, if it's wherever, so.
Yeah, and then especially if we're going to be adding a couple more commissioners to it. It's, it's going to be a big difference over the last. So as of right now, I know we're down that engineer position. I know Bill's running ragged. But we would just basically have to shuffle around what I allocated to other, you know, uses.
Right.
And we've got travel picking up in our other areas too. And Joe's over the place all the time, I know that. So just, it's just that balancing act I'm trying to get, you know, be able to predict the future a little bit better.
So Rachel, I mean, I'm, I'm the one that's over. Is that, is that because I did an onboarding and went to a division meeting?
That's, you've just been doing a lot more travel than has been typically done in your seat prior. Crystal would have better answers for that.
Commissioner Pratt, Mr. Chair. One of the reasons, and Rachel asked me this before, your predecessor in your seat. At least when I was here, I met him once. In a year and a half of being with the agency at that time, and that was shortly before he stepped down from his position. A lot of the meetings that he attended were via conference call, at least far as the regular commission meetings. And then his travel was typically much more local to his division, so there wasn't a lot of expenditures for hotel or mileage because he just wasn't driving that far. You are much more active as a commissioner, which is fantastic. We just have to shift the budget to accommodate you rather than what has historically gone on from your area. It's not a bad thing.
They're asking you to be as active as you are.
But the problem is not with you.
It's not you. Yeah, I know, and I'm not taking it as me either because I'm the one who gets plane tickets, so, but, I mean, they want us to be active and they want us to go around, they want us to visit, they want us to do what we got to do and that just comes, this is our high-paying job.
Also, keep, keep in mind that these numbers have not, like, the budget has not shifted very much in past years, but as has been mentioned several times. Prices of things are changing. When I first started, Eric, for example, his airline tickets averaged about two hundred and fifty dollars, give or take, just depending on how, how far in advance I could order them. The cheapest I have ever been able to get his flights in the last year has been three hundred and thirty five, three hundred and forty dollars. So it's gone up considerably and that's a month in advance. If I don't have a full month to be able to look for those tickets, it's higher. It's three seventy, three eighty. There was one time that recently where, I think it was for the interviews, his tickets were just over four hundred dollars because we only had a two-week lead on when we could get that scheduled. So that makes a big difference in these budgeted amounts.
That's another reason we're probably over because we have more meetings because of that too.
Right, right.
So this is Kathy Rummer. I have a couple of questions whenever I may ask. I didn't mean to interrupt Crystal there.
You don't interrupt, you'll never get to say anything.
This is true.
So go ahead.
Well, so I'm wondering, you know, what we're, let's see, what kinds of things? Let's see, is my schedule different than the schedule that comes out of the office there in terms of division meetings? And these things like the Ag Summit and that sort of thing. So aren't those typically on the calendar that, Crystal, you, you know about? And those are the things that should be budgeted for? Or are there other things that? For example, if I go to a district meeting, you know, I don't, I guess I've never really considered that as something that should, should be on the calendar. That's just something that I'm choosing to do. So where do those things work in? Do you understand my question?
Chairman, Commissioner Rummer. Yeah, that's, that's why, like I said earlier, when Crystal starts making travel arrangements, I have her see seeing me in on these things now. Just so I have a kind of a feel for what's going to be coming up. I don't mean to point anybody out or point any fingers. It's just this chart came out and when I did the financials and the commissioners' honorariums for this year, I looked at Commissioner Pratt's and went, oh, somebody's going to find that.
And, and I get that and I don't think you're pointing fingers or anything. It, it just made, it just made me think that everything is. Every, you know, our activities are pretty much set out before us, are, are they not? Now there may be increases in costs and I'm not disputing whether, you know, you should or shouldn't do this or I, I certainly understand where you're coming from. It's just a question that, you know, came to my mind actually.
Yeah, and when I set this budget, you know, it's at the end of the, the current fiscal year where we don't necessarily have everything planned out. And I'm, I mean, I'm here in eight months, so at this point, basically going off of historical spending. Trying to flesh out a better plan of budgeting.
No, no, no surprises maybe if you can help it. Okay, very good. Thank you for, for that. I appreciate it.
And Chairman, and Commissioner Rummer, to your question perhaps, my understanding, and Rachel can correct me. My understanding is if you're talking about meetings that are on your calendar. And you say, addition to those, if you choose to go to a district meeting, my understanding is that qualifies for an honorarium. If you go to Twin Falls tonight for the district meeting, you're due a fifty dollar honorarium for today because you are at a meeting on behalf of the commission. And so what we need to look at is, is how many district meetings, how many meetings in total, how many honorariums are you going to earn in the next fiscal cycle, if you will.
Yeah, well, I guess, Dylan, you kind of narrowed it down for me. That's, that's kind of what I was wondering. Because I've never really claimed those, you know, to go to a district meeting or something. To me, that's my choice, you know. But for purposes of perhaps potential increase in commissioners and new commissioners coming in. You know, that might be something that you definitely want to make known to people, you know, that they have that option of claiming that honorarium. Personally, I will continue to do as I have done, you know, I, I don't, I just haven't claimed that and I, and I won't. But, yeah, so that you kind of answered my question there. Thank you.
Well, there's a Zoom option too, which helps a lot. I also, we're going to talk about NASTA. And, I mean, there's somebody did for us to go currently, to go to, to any of those activities. But I think it would be certainly helpful to. Yeah, I'm just saying it's, there's other stuff out there that.
I think there's a lot to be said for the personal face-to-face, you know, interactions that go on.
So Rachel, I'm sure that you probably thought about this, that you were going to raise the budget, what would you raise it to? What, you got a number in mind, you think, or?
I have not.
Four thousand is what's allocated for the year.
Yeah, and Dylan and I discussed earlier about, you know, prior to the changeover in the administrator position. And the, the difference in travel that you guys have been doing just this fiscal year versus prior years. And I definitely just sit down and, and try to get a feel for you guys how, if that's going to continue. Obviously, we need more district interaction or are you going to leave that to Dylan, like? Like Terry had pretty much handled, you know, her, her time with us. But no, I haven't split the whole of the figure at all at this point. I'm just trying to get the details together.
You know, Commissioner, what if, what if we looked at something like, let's say on average, each commissioner goes to three meetings per month. Two meetings per month, whatever you think is realistic. That'd be a, that'd get us a ballpark, kind of, as far as for the honorarium side of things. So, and the seven hundred and twenty nine dollars, say seven hundred dollars worth of honorarium, what that, that is, that's fourteen fifty dollars.
Clear up my thinking here. Is the honorarium just so you attend the meeting? Is that something with the mileage to go to the meeting?
Right.
That's essentially your.
See, and I'm kind of with Kathy on the, on the whole going to the meeting thing. I don't, I'm not going to take an honorarium just to go attend the meeting now. If it was a mileage thing, I might turn the mileage report just for, to go to the meeting, but as far as me attending the meeting, I'm not, I'm not. I'm not going to pull that out.
But, I mean, on the other hand, if you wanted, you are owed that money.
Well, I understand that, but I also think that that comes along with territory because it's something to do the job. So.
I mean, yeah, that's what I think too.
I get where she's coming from on that now. Travel, as far as we coming down here, as far as we traveling to her end of the state or whatever, something like that. That's a different story, but as far as me going to a, like, when I go to my board meetings in honors, I got two hats on. Because I'm an associate member and I'm a commissioner, so I wouldn't take that honorarium to go to my local commissioner board, district board meeting. So, and I kind of view that as the same thing. If I go to a Sanford or meeting or Corleyan, you know, I just, it's kind of goes with territory as far as I'm concerned. So, I, I think maybe, maybe you could bring that down to how many trips a year do you think that we're going to take to Boise? Or, you know, if we end up having a joint meeting with ISCD, which I would like to have this year maybe. Wherever that's going to be, you know, try to, to figure that in. And then maybe we get into the NASTA discussion and, and we have interest in sending somebody back to DC or wherever it's at. To try to budget for that. I think if we could probably throw a number out there, you know, like a ten thousand number. Because we're going to have two more people coming on. Like starting point.
Okay, yeah, and to be fair, when I did put together the budget for this year, when I looked at those numbers, I remember thinking that's not too low. Okay, yeah, and to be fair, when I did put together the, the budget, um, for this year, when I looked at those numbers, I remember thinking that's not really low.
I remember that conversation.
So, would you guys be comfortable in if, if, uh, Rachel and Crystal and I work on drafting some kind of a draft budget, uh, or maybe we're close enough, say ten thousand, you know, is that?
Yeah, come up with some numbers.
Why don't we look at, we'll put a pencil to it and, and be as realistic as we can, and the closer the estimate is, better it is for our bean counters.
I hate that word.
Let's do that. And, and the other thing, um, when you say that you don't need an honorarium, I don't know, Shane, maybe you know, like, me as a commission employee, I can't work, like, Monday was President's Day or something, right? I can't work Monday without reporting those hours and getting paid for it. That's like volunteering time and the state is really against it. And I don't know if that applies to commissioners or not on your honorariums, if you're allowed to. I, I just, I honestly don't know.
That I don't know.
Joan might know.
I, I, I retired them, uh, under Percy, based on honorariums, like, uh, and, and some that I did not take. Uh, there was a time when I could not take the honorarium because of, uh, my Simplot, uh, my Simplot retirement. Anyhow, it was confusing, but it all counted as income to me when they, uh, so I, I just said I'm not taking the honorarium, but it counted as income to me when they calculated my Percy retirement. And so I now get two hundred dollars a month retirement based on twelve years of being on Board of Environmental Quality. And that several of those years, I did not take anything, but it, it went into the calculations. So, whatever, that's, that's just a retirement.
So you are gonna work out budget and come back with us and what you're, and make some assumptions. Now, I think when you make those assumptions, make sure you write them down, so you tell, okay, if we assume.
And, and it isn't a hard and fast rule or policy, or you will go, you will go to this many, you will not go to any more or any less.
Right.
But, I just. Absolutely.
Is that it for financial? I have a couple of questions that were, should have been brought up earlier. And you made comments to him during, um, your report. What about her vacancies?
Did you bring that up in your?
Yeah. Where are we at? You mentioned comment engineer and still not filled.
Crystal is gonna bring us up to date on that. We did not get any qualified applicants for either the engineer staff engineer or the associate engineer position. We had one applicant and they didn't pass the test.
They did not pass review this time around. Um, that was just conveyed to me yesterday. Um, so it's, for the engineer position, we are back to square one yet again. Um, so I don't know what we will do going forward this time. This last run, we had the sign-on bonus listed. Um, we advertised with a few new associate webpages that DHR has through their, their online thing. Wendy, there's more coffee in the copy room. I never got a chance to add it to the air pod, but it is me. Um, as far as replacing Loretta's position with the natural resource conservationist in the Emmett area, that run went much more successfully. We have, if I remember correctly, fourteen referred applications. Um, and I am in the process of arranging those and getting those um, organized so that Loretta will be able to go through them and select who she would like to begin interviewing for that process. So that one is actually moving along pretty nicely.
By next month's meeting, we could have a new NRC.
Maybe, I hope by April, we're not doing March.
Should we, on the engineering position, what's the location?
We have to list a location.
Currently, it's listed as Pocatello.
In the narrative, doesn't it say? Indicates that it's flexible for Southern Idaho.
The reason I'm asking that is, would you think we might be successful? Cause I could see, uh, within Boise area. And having that person, yes, I know it's traveled, but I'm looking for a person here. And Boise, they're a lot easier to travel Southeast Idaho than, right now, Bill coming down from Moleskine. I'm just asking that.
Yeah.
Another challenge that we have is our budget for that position is compared to other state agencies, is just not offering enough comparatively speaking, even within other state agencies. And then when you factor in private sector as well, there are a lot of other options available for viable candidates.
So be more creative.
Yeah.
An engineer obviously has the ability to sign off on projects because under his DE license. My question always is, to build the package to that point, most everybody farms that out to other people in their office. And then a professional engineer just reviews it and we'll see if there's any errors and finds on. Now, I know the technician idea was that, but, uh, can we look at a position such as Loretta's that was vacant, but have a component of that as helping to design projects? With the idea that they did, they would be in contact with Bill and he'd be the one to review and sign off? I'm just trying to figure out, Bill is not gonna work going from Moleskine to Southeast Idaho all the time. I'm just trying to figure out, how can we come out of the box so that we create something that might relieve that, but not relieve his obligation, you know, to review and sign.
Right.
I'm just.
That, that, that is, that is a good idea, and, uh, I'll look into that more. We, Bill has used Eileen up there in Idaho County and, and, uh, Division Two over the, over time quite a bit for that, giving her job approval, authority. But he had to sign off on the, uh, the design work, it was something that required a P to sign off on. So that's a possibility. The other thing that Rachel and Bill and Loretta and I just started, when, when I got the results back earlier this week on, on our engineering, uh, the lack of interest in our engineering position, the, the first thing I, place I jumped was it's time to look seriously at, at an alternative. What will it take to get DFM and Governor's Office to permit us to use dollars from somewhere, either personnel savings or operations or whatever, so that we can hire contract engineers to cover for down, as we've been doing this year, hiring Donnell. And, and so Rachel started looking into that or fixing to look into that, and we'll, 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 that's another area that we're gonna discuss. Um, the deal about hiring somebody with a Boise, you know, working out of this, so that their, their duty station, Boise, is, we did that with one person that was previously, Chuck used to be down in, in Match Valley, cause he wanted like, in the worst way to move to Boise, Terry permitted him to move to Boise and it ate our lunch. As far as travel, hotels, and as far as the, the, the work that was getting done down there, it was just, uh, engineering is a little bit different, but man, if, I would rather hire a con- personally, I would rather hire a contract number of contract people, whatever it took to get the job done for the next year or two, until this infrastructure boom maybe slows down, or until the state comes to terms with the fact that they don't pay enough for engineers. And they, they go ahead and increase the compensation.
Burst your bubble. But currently, what's been, uh, graduated out of engineering school has not been rapidly increasing, the number of people, it's been pretty constant. And right now, uh, with all the monies that's coming into this state, not just Idaho, but United States wise, all those projects, transportation projects, my son just got through saying their budget, they should have been enough.
It's an ITD.
ITD. And they have projects, uh, spanned out the next ten years that are major projects. All, every last one has to be engineered, and there's no way they could injure all those projects in-house, so they're looking for engineers. I'm sorry, but I'm talking ten years out, ain't gonna happen.
Yeah.
So back to your second question was, it's all about the money.
Yes, Chairman. I just, so you know, I'm in the construction management program at ESU, which is also engineering. And we did just get a notice this morning, um, from construction management department about ITV hiring a ton of engineering interns, full-time will work around their schedules, um, for the next minimum of five years. And they're looking for a lot of them, and even state agencies that can pay quite a bit more than we can, still can't fill their positions either. So, no, I completely agree that, I don't think we're gonna be able to.
You said the magic words, you're about to construct management and take the engineering classes?
No, that is not allowed.
I'm telling you how much I enjoy designing beams with the steel rebar and stuff right now.
Okay, and the other thing is, we are not ITV, and we are not, uh, you know, Idaho Materials Corporation, or, we do offer some, a unique possibility, unique potentials for the right person. We have a very excellent engineer that's stuck with us to this point, even though he's had opportunities to earn considerably more with other state agencies. So, with, there are some advantages to us, and, and maybe, maybe what we should do is just keep listing it until, you know, somebody trips along and gets it, but, but, or at least every once in a while, we need to list it. There are people that, that see the attractiveness of working for us.
So, should we start sending emails to engineers at other state agencies and saying, hey?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's a great idea, cause they, they come and take our employees all the time.
Hey, you wanna take a pay cut? Flexible hours. But good stuff, we do need to think, we need to, we need to expand the way we're thinking about it.
Uh, in those announcements, do you send, I know that everybody's supposed to go on the web, magic website, we've got the job and all the crazy and all that. You send information to the colleges?
Bill is in charge, or, yeah, he's in charge, and he has been contacting deans of engineering schools and colleges of engineering of, if, that's Idaho.
All the colleges have a employment aspect to their college that you can go there and they, uh, want people to shop there and say, okay, we're looking for these people. And I know that that happens fairly.
Well, and what schools specifically is he looking at? No, he talked about some in, some on the West Coast, some like Seattle. But there's a good, a good reminder to me, I need to check back with him, that, that's been some years ago, we had, probably when Alan first left, when, when Bill indicated he was, he was doing that. And, uh, a good reminder for me to remind him to expand that net and see if he could.
I haven't seen one company that was a state.
Pardon me?
I haven't seen one company that was a state.
So, and she's on the engineering mailing list by default because of her major.
May I ask a question? Do, do you ask for, do they have to be professional engineers?
We listed it as both, an associate engineer or a P.
Okay.
So one would be a track.
Yeah, the track is where you're gonna get them. Yeah, you're really gonna get them to the lower end, and push that environmental.
Now that I brought that question, got one more though, just to go as soon as. Assuming, this is a big assumption, if we get Walkpuff. Have you started figuring out how we're going to administer with existing personnel?
Yes.
How it's next to you?
Yeah, I don't have a plan to lay before you right now, but I, uh, but I am, I'm working on it and thinking about it, and strategic, strategizing about it. And that includes a review of the Walkpuff files on our, on, you know, our archives. And, uh, so that is in process. If we do get funding, it will be, uh, for twenty twenty-three. And well before the funding becomes available, we will have, Loretta will have a fully executable plan. And believe me, that's, that is a concern, uh, I even, uh, it would, if I didn't get asked it on it, until I understood why it hadn't gotten asked it on. Monday morning, I had a, a moment of relief. I'm gonna be able to fly feature all of a sudden. It's gonna be, it's gonna be a workload that we can handle, I know we can handle it.
Last item is NASCAP.
Chairman, the last item is that we did receive our NASCAP dues, and you can see that the invoice is attached, is, uh, three thousand dollars. And to Commissioner Pratt's point, we actually, we actually do fund, I'm not sure, I know Norman was at NASCAP for most of a week this year. In Spokane. In the past, Terry used to go down, one year she took a couple of the staff people with her to Lexington, when, when it was in Lexington. But there is opportunity for you guys to, uh, not en masse, but we can budget it in and fund. We also get scholarships from NASCAP, being dues, uh, dues paying members of NASCAP, they give us, I don't know how generous the scholarship is.
Uh, they give us an opportunity for scholarship. There are two levels of scholarship, um, for example, Norman being the chairman of the board was eligible for a thousand dollar scholarship, which offset the cost of him attending for four days considerably.
Now, I, and I, Dylan, I talked about this part of this fall, uh, but actually last summer, about NASCAP and him attending. And he made comment to me, he wanted to stay close at home, spend more of the travel money and working with districts and all that, which I respected. I, and then he said, but you can go, and I says, you know, I would like the opportunity. It's about the second NASCAP meeting I attended, and then one over in, in Whitefish, wasn't it?
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
And I was the first one I, I went to, and then of course, Terry Nelson was on their board. Uh, that was no reason that she went to quite a few. And I went to many, of course, there are my people there I know, and every friggin' last one, last name's where Dylan was, cause the word had already been out that you were, I said, well, Dylan's not quite in the position, just got the commissioner job. And I laid out a lot of excuses for him, uh, most of them, I understood, they expected me back. I want to explain a little bit for a minute or two here, what you get at NASCAP meetings. Of course, it's a national association of state observation agency, not really interesting in itself. When you get in states like Washington, and we're talking mega dollars, but we're talking, they've got all these, uh, departments of, it is a, it's a state ag department, that's already fisheries. And fisheries is a big issue in Washington, lots of money. So you've got four or five state agency there, but you get back into other states, and they're strictly run by the partner of act, that's just a branch of your partner of act. And each state is different, there's no candy, uh, cut or deal. But we sit around at tables and discuss certain questions that come up about how would you do this? How, how'd you do this? And you're given scenarios, and it's, it's a very good learning experience. Dylan, I came back and said, Dylan, you really need to go, and this is why. In my book, the people that are there are great resources. State of Washington's just amazing what they're doing. State of Oregon, I was very surprised, it's not representative, that kind of shocked me, but Washington, and Washington skips across the border in North Idaho, and they do some projects in Idaho too, which we appreciate their money. Uh, and they've asked, well, why can't you help cost share in this project? Uh, and they've asked, well, why can't you help kosher in this project? And I says, we don't have any money. Period. Because our water sheds, as we well know, flow from Idaho into Washington. And they say our problem is we need to stop above, but by state law, we can't go any further than, than state line. But you talk to people there that have been around for a while, that have gone through different problems. And they're fantastic resource persons. Del doesn't have anything going against them either. There's nobody else that does what he does and stays vital. Just that simple. There's other people have like God, nothing along those lines. And these are voluntary agencies or voluntary programs for their states. It's a fantastic network. Now, can we get something now that as commission members? Oh, yeah, we could. Uh, I came back, there was a whole list of questions for him and I just gave him today, which I kept forgetting. Because their director, the person that puts this together from Washington is, I just lost Ray Ledgerwood. Does a fantastic job and they taped, put together most of the presentations on a thumb drive that he gave me. And I just got to give to Del one today. I mean, and the lady from Washington, I can't remember her name, but she told me, uh, she worked, she lives in Idaho. She lives in Sandpoint, I think, drives the whole camp part of time every day. And she says, if Del ever has a question, come. I think I've done, been there, done that, from closing district offices to opening district offices. She's been around for a while. And she knows Bill up there. Bill came over and helped engineer something on their farm. So we've got connections. Those connections are networking and we don't live in isolation. And, you know, yeah, it's travel. Uh, they move around the NASCA convention every year, someplace different. Twenty-one, twenty, they didn't even have one, I don't think. But twenty-one, they did, it was closed convenient and I tied in going to Division One meeting. At least I tried to go to and driving up from Sandpoint and their wonderful construction project on the Sandpoint Bridge. I sat there, but counted the table rocks for two hours. And the one good thing about it was is a number of people that were coming from corner lane areas, guess where they were? Oh, oh, I think I recognize that pickup down the road here. There's no here. They beat me to the meeting. Only because they gave us poor direction to get to the meeting. Sorry about that, Bob, if you're on the phone. Anyway. But I'm I'm a supporter of it and I don't think it's one of those network things that I think is worth the money.
Right, Chairman. And per our conversation, since you were there, I have pretty clear understanding that I'm kind of expecting so. And, and I, I see just like Norman's gotten a great deal of value each time he's gone, that, that all of our commissioners should kind of rotate through everybody and get you to a, one of those annual meetings. For myself, one of the, the meet, one that I attended in Lexington, one of the things, yeah, you meet some districts. There's some state agency folks where their states are rocking and rolling, lots of money and lots of projects. And you know what? You meet some that are poor, redheaded stepchills too, you know, that, that really, there are some districts there, or there's some state, New Mexico or Arizona. A one, a one-person shop, that's all that runs there.
Missouri got passed, they have to go back in every ten years, now it's four again, got passed about twenty years ago. I think it's one quarter of a percent of their sales tax goes to their districts, commission slash districts. And Missouri, I thought like twenty-five million dollars. Basically millions. We get fifty thousand bucks and think we're, yeah, we're jumping up.
And Idaho lottery money goes to districts, some of them, but a lot of them, so they're, they're well, they all have staff and technical people and.
Yeah, the whole Ken district has more staff than all of us.
And I'm sure a bigger budget, no doubt.
Only about three times.
Yeah. So it is, it's really a valuable.
But we smooch, we get some information about those people and they're willing to share.
Yeah.
Especially ones riding around us because they see the problem not stopping at the state border. And Washington's working pretty hard with some good contacts in Canada. But I think there was a couple of people from Canada.
Makes sense that Columbia.
So that's my NASCA. I didn't know a thing about them, I'm up thirty-four years, but didn't know they existed.
And there's been other things too, I believe. Can you remember any other functions around, well, the Washington DC fly-in? Did you attend that one year?
Not from NASCA standpoint, NASCA.
Not, not from NASCA, but I mean, I'm just trying to, to. Commissioner Pratt's question about other things that could be of value.
That was a joint N R C S, uh, district and commissioner meeting. Why it was interesting? I'm not sure it was beneficial. Let's be honest, but our money is state monies. Uh, N R C S has an interest, uh, and N I C D, uh, you know, they, they lobby at that level. Do we lobby at that level? No. Should we? I don't think it's worth our money. Now, to our master's mention, I'll support the ten Washington DC conference with N R C S and I S C D. I would question that. I can say a few other things, that's it.
Have we always paid the three thousand? Cause it says personal payment is.
Probably.
Welcome.
We didn't pay anything for years. We started in with that after we attended the meeting in Whitefish. Uh, they bundled up our monies to help us get there so we could, they could learn about NASCA. And that, up until then, I knew nothing. There are some states that are pretty poor, poorer than we are. And they've only funded just a little bit. And so it's just like, I asked, uh, I stopped, I S C D deal, you know, they would like reach the district to pay two hundred dollars, but they'll take partial payments. I have three thousand dollars well spent personally.
But you don't have to, I mean, someone could go without us spending them. I mean, I mean, is it a prerequisite of the person going?
If we want scholarships, which we've been lucky enough to have some, I would dare say probably that if we aren't a member. Well, you've been doing it for about five or six years, Kristen.
Um, we've done it ever since I started, which was just before Eric was appointed to the board.
Five or six years.
Yeah, and I can look historically and see, but I'm pretty sure we've been paying it for at least four to five years. If not more.
Yeah, as long as we use it, you know, if we're not using it then.
Well, I think Del would be an absolute must go, but I think that, um, I like, I like the idea. It depends on the time of year for me. When does, when do they usually have it?
It's typically early October, early to mid-October, I believe. I think it was the first week of October this year.
They also have a really good website and you can go on there and find information too. And I think they work on pretty hard and to find it out in the meantime, so.
Okay, Chairman, if I could, you know, here at the end of the fundraising letter that, that they send out about, they, they speak about countless opportunities for state conservation agency staff members to serve on NASCA committees. Just full disclosure, I'm not the kind of guy that likes to go and get appointed to a whole bunch of committees all across the country. You know, I really, my focus is, is here in our agency, my people and our districts. So don't, don't expect me, or if you do expect me, give me fair warning.
I wouldn't expect you to do something like that, but I, I think that there's, like he said, the networking part of it would be very, very, very valuable to you.
Yeah.
To build those relationships and get some different ideas of, yeah, so.
Okay, so Todd, uh, do I have a motion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll move, uh, move to approve paying the twenty twenty-two NASCA dues of three thousand dollars.
No second.
Say of emotional floor, but this, also something the Commissioner Pratt, do I have further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now with that, that is our completed written agenda, is it? I guess we're closing out. Our next meeting will probably be in April. Six months, right?
Right. Maybe June, look out.
Okay, thank you all. Meeting's adjourned.
Thank you, Norman.
I'll see you.
Yeah, thank you. You too, Del. Hey, you survived the crash.
You bet.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Shane.
Thank you.
Okay, and yes, I'll be there.